On our end.
Okay, all right. All right, good evening and welcome. I call to order the April 26, 2021 City Council Successor Agency to the redevelopment agency Housing Authority regular meeting. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay, thank you. All right, so at this point, item, we're on item three, Council Communications and Announcements, our brief items from members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. So is there any council members who wish to? All right, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to let the community know that last Thursday was Library Reopening Day in San Carlos. Our beloved San Carlos Library reopened. In-Library Express service is now available Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays from 10:00 to 1:00 and 2:00 to 5:00, and the rest of the days is still curbside service as normal. So going down to the library, it looks great. They're taking lots of COVID precautions and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McDowell. All right. I'm, I'm not seeing any additional hands raised from council at this time, so we'll move on to public comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The City Council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future City Council agenda for more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion and input at that time. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make comments?
No, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. All right, so at this point then, we'll take reports to council. This is to receive a report on the effect of the tie vote on the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision denying the 977 Laurel Street condominium conversion request, continued from the April 12, 2021 City Council meeting. And I understand City Attorney Grubens will be making the report this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. As you can see from the, the report that's in your packet, after the late meeting we had last time, I was able to quickly determine the result of a tie vote. And the report out is that in our code, section 18.27.150H, it's, it, it contemplates what happens when there's a tie vote on an appeal and the tie vote of the council has the effect of denying the appeal and upholding the decision of the Planning Commission. There's no action required on your part. The purpose of the continuance was to allow me to report on, on what the result was, just so that it, because there, although I thought I had the right answer, I hadn't confirmed at the time of the, at the end of that night, that night.
Okay, thank you. All right, any comments from? Council? All right, Crystal, any members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
No, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, all right, then we'll move to Agenda Item Six, the study session, discuss the operating budget process and general overview. I understand this evening we'll be taking a retrospective look with respect to tax revenues, spend, accomplishments, and our first presenter on general and financial overview is Jeff Maltby, City Manager, and Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Let me just get situated here with PowerPoint, see if I can. I don't seem to be able to control the sliding.
Okay, I'll, I'll help advance the slides for you.
Great, thank you. Why don't we go to the first slide then? Thank you. So as, as the council's aware, our, our budget study session process this year is broken into two sessions tonight and this coming Saturday, May 1st, will be session two. And I believe somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're starting at 9:00 AM on Saturday. So we invite the members of the public to join us then. Tonight really is about looking back at our current budget and where we've been and how we got there and what we've accomplished. Any good budgeting process needs to keep those things in mind. As we look towards the planning for the future, it's important to know how we got to the present. And so we're going to get a lot of great information from our department heads tonight, but before we start to hear from them in their presentations, you'll get a little bit of an overview from myself and Rebecca Mendenhall, our Administrative Services Director. So let's go to the next slide. So pre-pandemic from 2015 to 2020, we saw in San Carlos, pretty significant revenue growth, averaging about 7% a year. And, and we were able to grow our expenditures and our programs and do more public improvement projects as a result, set more money aside into building reserves and planning for larger capital improvement projects, such as the rebuilding of Fire Station 16 that we talked about at our last council meeting. So things were pretty good and we spun off a number of large surpluses. I think we had surpluses 10 straight years in a row to sort of balance off the prior 10 years that were 10 straight years of budget deficits. And, and then we entered the pandemic year, which obviously has kind of been a year unto itself. Let's take a look at the next slide. So in February of 2020, we established the current base budget. In March of 2020, COVID-19 struck us, first with the, the cruise ship and hotel response, as you might recall. And from there, it, it bloomed out to kind of a, you know, worldwide issue very quickly. And we continue to deal with that today. In May of 2020, the council took swift action in, in addressing the budget situation. We revised our base budget estimates quickly to determine that we had about a $5.3 million deficit that we were projecting, much of which what came from anticipated revenue loss based on COVID-19 closures. In addition to that, we had increased expenditures, wanting to make sure that those in our community that were unable to work had access to, to food, that there were rental assistant programs in place, business programs in place, the downtown outdoor dining program, so that our restaurants could continue to operate, our downtown could continue to operate in, in a very uncertain economic climate. And folks had a place to go with their families, that they would feel safe during the pandemic. All these things were obviously unanticipated by us the year prior when we put that budget together for those types of expenses that were being incurred. We directed staff to prepare for council's consideration 10% budget reductions, options. This didn't mean that the council needed to cut a full 10% across the board, but we like to, when we, particularly when we're cutting the budget, provide the council with options so that you can, you can weigh, you know, one difficult choice against another to make sure that the programs and services and projects that are continuing on in a downtime are in fact what the, reflect the council's priorities. Let's take a look at the next slide, thank you. So there were many difficult decisions, as I'm sure you recall. Employees were asked to give back 3% and 3.5% raises in different employee groups that had been agreed to in a prior year with the City Council. Salaries for Ask Me Unit were held flat. There were reductions and reduced benefits and elimination of the 457 match program, which is a retiree, retirement account program for employees. We capped vacation accrual so that you could no longer receive financial cash out if you were unable to use all your vacation time in a given year. We eliminated seven full-time and part-time positions, four positions in community development, I think two of which had just about a month prior to the pandemic hitting been created and funded by the council. Two full-time and many part-time positions in recreation. It was Parks and Recreation Department was, was specifically hit and affected by COVID because so much of what they traditionally do wasn't allowed during the pandemic. And we're just seeing the department begin to grow out of that now and bring programming back online that had been in place for many years. And we eliminated one full-time position in our Public Works Department. So we didn't end there. There was a lot more difficult considerations that the council had to wrestle with as we put together this current budget that we're operating under right now. We eliminated Contract Emergency Services District Coordinator position that we were sharing with the county. We eliminated numerous special events that we weren't able to hold due to COVID restrictions. We eliminated the Citizens Academy Employee Recognition Events, professional video production outreach. We reduced conferences and training citywide. And we were able to do this without a major impact on our city services to the community. Many of these things were going to be curtailed sort of naturally under the state COVID reduction orders in what was allowed to happen. Conferences weren't going to be held because there wasn't enough time to put them together virtually, particularly towards the beginning of the pandemic. Next slide, please. So this slide gives you an indication of how we got there in terms of the various elements, cuts to the operating budget, staff and salary and benefit reductions, other expenditures, and the use of reserves, of which we didn't have to use nearly as much as we had anticipated as things, our revenue overall impacts weren't quite as severe as we were forced to plan for. Next slide. So we continue to do our strategic planning. That's a key milestone in our budget preparation process where we have the opportunity to do our strategic plan in January and really hear from our City Council, who are, you know, sharing with us what they're hearing from members of the public. Folks fresh off the campaign trail are able to share their experiences if it's an election year. And that all gets built into and prioritized by the City Council to become part of our strategic plan. And the timing of that in January is critical for us because pretty much as soon as this, we're done with the strategic plan, the staff starts on the budget process, which has led us up to tonight and will continue on through June when we anticipate the council adopting a new budget at their second meeting in June, I believe we're targeting. So we've been, we've been working for months preparing what we call a base budget as we try to piece together the revenues, the changes in state and federal law that, that may have some effect on our funding and anticipate new projects or initiatives that are going to generate revenue for the city in the coming year. That all becomes the base budget combined with what we anticipate to be known existing expenditures. Much of our budget at the city might be considered, if you've studied political science, an incremental type line item budget, right? And, and it grows incrementally because much of what we do from one year to the next and many of the services that we provide from one year to the next remain very stable and unchanged, which is what typically the public wants. They depend on those services. They don't want to see those services, public safety services, you know, building inspection services, health and safety services, even parks and rec services change dramatically from one year to the next so that they can plan their lives around utilizing and accessing those services. And so much of what we end up talking about typically in the budget process and really what you'll probably spend the majority of your time talking about at our next study session on Saturday are, are those incremental changes, those differences. And they're big differences and they're important to us and they're priority, they reflect current priorities. But they tend to be, as Sean and Deb are facilitators from Strategic Planning Process would say, they're the tip of the iceberg, right? And so tonight, we're going to hear what's below the waterline, what continues, what doesn't necessarily get a lot of attention during the, the budget process because we're all anticipating that those services are going to continue on without significant change in most instances. Next slide, please. So in 2021, we did our citizen survey, which we do every other year. And this was reported out to council, but it's something we, we like to keep in mind as we enter, enter our budget process, which is a significant planning milestone that we do every year. Even when we do a two-year budget, we still check in at that mid-year mark. And 82% of residents in our city were very somewhat satisfied with the city's municipal services. And 82% of respondents were satisfied with the city's communication efforts. And as we heard from our consultant, these were very good numbers compared with other cities of which they survey for many, many in the state of California. Next slide, please. 91% of residents reported a good or excellent quality of life in San Carlos, which is not surprising. And we're really happy to hear. We, we hold that statistic very close to our heart, is something that, you know, we, we would have liked to see only ever increase and not decrease. Next slide, please. Future focuses that we, we heard about, providing fire protection services really jumped up in this current survey, particularly around concerns around wildfire threats. We've ramped up our services in that area and our preparation in that area to help keep the community safe. And we'll continue those efforts and, and have some additional proposals in the coming budget. Repairing and maintaining streets and roadway infrastructure remains a high priority to our residents. And providing high-quality police services, those were three of the, the top categories and concerns that we heard from our residents in, in the last survey. Next slide, please. In addition, affordable housing, while limiting growth and development, there's a little bit of, of a, of a knot to untie and a little subtlety to that information in the community. But one thing we can take away from that particular information is that the council's efforts to share with the community, the housing crisis that exists in the Bay Area and what it means for our community and our residents has been received by the community. That message is getting out there and it's having an effect. People's understanding of the issue seems to be deeper than it was several years ago. And as such, it rose up the scale as a priority for our community. Reducing traffic and congestion, which might be the one silver lining of the pandemic for city services. I think we definitely achieved that unexpectedly in the last year. But as things return to normal, we'd expect to encounter some of the, some of the traditional traffic problems that we've had around town. Efforts continue. And we have really focused on that in some of our staff recommendations in, that you'll hear on Saturday, about how we might do a better job with, with roadway projects and, and put additional resources towards that effort. And then providing additional public parking for downtown seems to be one of the hardy perennials that always makes, you know, sort of the top, top tier in, in our citizen survey. Next slide, please. We also had the opportunity to check in with the community on impacts from, on, of the pandemic on, on the respondents and, and their households. Two-thirds reported that they had switched from commuting, commuting to work to working from home, which is almost a mind-boggling number, if you think about it, what that represents in our city and region-wide. A quarter experienced reduction in work hours or salary as a result of the pandemic. A fifth reported that their financial situation had worsened. And it was also indicated, particularly early on in the pandemic, that it was harder to find childcare, which is not surprising given the difficulties around schools and childcare centers, particularly in the early, under the early operating rules of the pandemic. So putting San Carlos in context, as a, as a municipal organization, as a city government, we're actually really different than most of our neighboring communities and even most communities in Northern California. We're organized a bit more in a Southern California city model way where we share services and with neighboring agencies. And we've kind of taken that to, to an extreme for our region, but it's actually fairly common within the state, just not, not particularly this region. And it started a long time ago, sharing things like our sewer treatment plant with our neighbors. It's a multi-billion dollar piece of infrastructure that, that we've been investing heavily in for the last decade. And I'm sure, you know, we're all aware of the, the sewer rate increases that have gone on and had to, had to be put in place to pay for such a large project and such, and to improve the, not only the plant infrastructure, but our own collection system pipes, many of which were nearing 70, 80, 90 years old and really beginning to break down and struggle to meet the needs of the community in a safe and healthy way. Those costs would be dwarfed if we weren't in partnership with our neighboring communities. To be able to share those costs and, and with our neighbors on a plant that's modern and efficient and able to keep our community's health safe, safe and functioning, the way that folks would expect to protect their property and their livelihoods and their families in our community. So we have far fewer staff as a result of how we're structured than most of our neighbors on a per capita basis compared to population size. Because we share a police department with, with, with the sheriff's office and we share a fire department with Redwood City, those employees aren't on our books. They're carried by those organizations and we buy service from them as opposed to stand up our own services. But we've done so in such a way that still gives us local control over those services. We buy what we want. We direct our own activities like any city would within our city limits, utilizing and sharing resources with our neighbors, which, which we have a long tradition with and which many of our neighboring communities have a tradition with as well. If you compared these numbers to communities that don't share anything, then you'd see even more employees in cities these size in some parts of the state. So we do a lot of sharing and, and San Carlos has really embraced that and tried to take that to the next level, which has made us a very efficient and streamlined organization, able to meet a lot of challenges, able to, to bring to bear a lot of, a lot of resources when we need, even more resources than, you know, any city our size could expect in similar circumstances that wasn't organized in, in the way that we are. Next slide, please. So this gives you an idea of revenue per capita and how we're structured. And the revenue, the discussion of revenue between one city and another, we could literally spend a week discussing just this particular issue. But it's a question we've gotten from the public a number of times over the years, particularly when things take a downturn and they might ask, well, you know, my, you know, my mom lives in Burlingame. How come they're not dealing with the same type of issues that you're dealing with in San Carlos? And it's because while everybody pays property tax under the same state law and, and cities operate under the, the same type of legal framework for other taxes like sales tax or hotel transit occupancy tax and those kinds of things, there are some important differences. If you take a look at, at Belmont and you look at revenue per capita, they would be the lowest. But what's not reflected in that statistic is the fact that they also have a separate entity, a separate jurisdiction operating their, their fire protection district, which is paying for fires. So they also don't have any fire department to pay for within that number. Now, it's all, you know, it's really the same organization, but it's broken out differently. So the numbers make that difficult to, to discern sometimes. But really the major difference is San Carlos receives a fairly small share of its property tax relative to a lot of other communities. Some communities in San Mateo County receive three times more of their own property tax money back than we do. And it all stems back to the 1970s and Proposition 13. When Proposition 13 passed and took effect, up until that point, cities could raise or lower their own property tax rates every year. So that would be an action that the council would have to take and had had to take in terms of determining what that tax rate was going to be for the coming year. And San Carlos was a very fiscally conservative city even then and didn't want to overburden their residents. And so they would really do, you know, everything they could to keep that tax rate as low as they could, knowing that, you know, if they had a big project or expense they needed to do, they could raise the tax rate up next year and pay for that and then lower it back down again. So it happened to be particularly low, even for the history of the city at the time that legislation went into effect. And it froze the, the tax rate at that level. So today we receive about 11 cents on the dollar of what a resident property owner in our town pays in property tax. And the rest goes to other agencies, schools and counties and special districts and other things get a greater share of our property tax revenue than some other cities that, in the county that receive upwards of 35 cents on the dollar in property tax. And there's no changing that. That's fixed in time under the current, the current laws of the state of California. It would require a statewide change in how that's all handled to be able to change that particular issue. In addition, San Carlos as a city doesn't really have any special taxes. We don't have a special property tax or a special sales tax that other cities do. And then, and then you can get into some regional differences. Obviously, Burlingame has an unusually high number of hotels for a community their size because of their proximity to the San Francisco International Airport. Others have, you know, shopping malls or, or other things. Foster City is a very different type of community because it's about because it's about 50 or 60 years younger than all the other communities on the peninsula. So it was built in a more modern era. And as such, you know, sort of had more big box retail incorporated into its initial development. And all those things add up to create a very different revenue picture from one city to the next. Even if you're talking about just 10 feet from over the city limit line from one community to the next, you can see really large differences. Next slide, please. So safety and other city services spending per capita. As you can see, we are actually fairly low relative. And that has to do with the model in which we employ. And you look at cities like Los Gatos and Belmont on the chart, and that's just reflecting just their police services. Yet our police department is bigger than their police department and offers more services to the community, but it's under a very different model. And the model is inherently more efficient than trying to operate. You know, small cities and small city departments can be inherently inefficient from a financial perspective. And our sharing and partnerships with other agencies has really mitigated that, made it very cost effective, but also made the service delivery very robust. Next slide, please. So we always like to look ahead at budget threats. There's always, you know, potential storm clouds on the horizon. And the sooner we acknowledge that and keep that on the radar, the easier they are and the better position we are to manage any negative effects that begin to pop up or threats that turn into reality. COVID-19 and sort of the reopening of the world is going to bring a lot of, almost as much uncertainty with it as the shutting down process did. So we're, you know, we're sensitive to that. We're sensitive to the fact that different industries are going to bounce back at different rates than one another and are going to have different needs within our community for some time here as things begin to return to normal. Climate change and the effects on our community, I think, are indisputable. You know, I am a lifelong Bay Area native and our climate is not the same as it was when I was growing up. It is more severe. We are in what's being called a mega drought. And we need to, you know, continue to do the good work that we're doing in that area to plan for the effects on our community so that they don't hit us all at once and that they don't catch us off guard. Our work in terms of wildfire protection, you know, 20 years ago, probably, you know, if folks just turned on our meeting tonight and heard us talking about that, would think we'd lost our minds. Why would we be talking about that in San Carlos? You know, there's like one wildfire in 100 years. You know, we had a wildfire on the coast that was very significant last year in an area that is, it's not essentially, it's a rainforest. You know, and if that doesn't wake us all up, I don't know, you know, what will. And so we're responding to those threats by planning for them, looking at our climate mitigation and adaptation plan work, our work in terms of sustainable energy for the community in conjunction with others in the county. Water conservation efforts have been significant in our city over the years and we're prepared to partner with Cal Water to continue those efforts in the future. We heard a report earlier this year and in the last several years from our Public Works Department talking about the declining state of quality of our pavement within the city and the need for budgeting additional resources. The council responded immediately by allocating additional resources for that program. And we're going to be providing you options next Saturday to continue to fund it at that high level and in fact even push it higher and get more of our pavement upgraded and maintained in the coming two-year budget. We're always watching rising public safety costs, public pension costs. These are things that traditionally have, over decades, outpaced our revenue growth. So they're sort of systemic threats to our budget and financial stability. And so we watch those closely, always talking with our partners and internally about how we can find ways to provide the same level of service or greater service but from a more efficient financial cost base. The council has been willing over the years to take a lot of the unexpected surplus money that we received and make prepayments, take advantage of the opportunity that you could get a very high rate of return on that money by making prepayments to CalPERS, our retirement system, to drive down our annual pension obligations. And at this point, you have, by investing that money, have saved well, well over a million dollars a year in what your annual contribution rate would be. So that's a million dollars that you have in the budget to invest in other programs and services and not have to send off to CalPERS as a required payment. Next slide, please. All right. Well, that's the end of my presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca to kind of walk you through some of the revenue and expenditure categories as an overview of how the budget is structured every year. And then we're going to hear from our departments. So thank you very much.
So Jeff, just a quick question with respect to procedure. Is it your expectation that we'll run through all of the presentations from all of the department heads and then take questions?
You know, I was going to suggest that you hear from myself and then Rebecca, and then you can ask Rebecca and I questions and then just hear from each department and then ask them questions before moving on to the next.
Okay. And then does that also align with how we would do public comment at the same time or public comment all the way at the end?
I would just take public comment at one time typically.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Thank you. Rebecca.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Manton Hall, Administrative Services Director. So this is actually one of my favorite graphics in the budget book because I think it gives you an overview of all of the funds that we have. So the city's budget consists of 18 different funds, not just the one that we typically refer to. And these can be grouped in six different categories. The one that we typically refer to is the general fund, as that's the primary operating fund of the city and is used to account for most day-to-day activities. These revenue sources include property taxes, sales taxes, transient occupancy taxes, or otherwise known as hotel taxes, fees for services and business registration. Our enterprise funds are similar to a private business enterprise, whereas the cost of providing the service is funded primarily through user charges. So for the city, this enterprise fund is our sewer fund and the sewer rates are used to fund our sewage treatment, transmission and capital improvements to our sewage system. Our other revenue funds are used to account for revenue sources for which expenditures are restricted by law or administrative action for specific purposes. These funds include the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES, police grants and the library tenant funds. Our capital funds are those funds that are set up to specifically account for long-term capital projects. We have several capital funds for different types of infrastructure projects, including equipment replacement, gas tax, Measure A, Measure W funds, which are used for street projects and housing, park, parking loo, parking loo. And you may hear us refer to Capital Fund 25 as that is our general capital fund that's used for infrastructure projects that may not have a restricted funding source. Our city debt service fund was created to capture the tax levies that you see on your property tax bill associated with the general obligation or GO bonds from the construction of the library. Those bonds will be paid off in August of 2026. And finally, the internal service funds are used to account for activities and services provided by designated department on a cost reimbursement basis. So this includes workers' compensation, general liability and post-employment benefits. Next slide. Thank you. So as part of our budget, we have to establish control. And so our budgetary control is maintained at the department and or program level. Budgets are monitored in our financial system at the line item level and departments get notified when their funds are, when they don't have funds available in that line item. The city manager has the authority to transfer funds between departments within the same fund, but any transfers between funds or additional appropriation requests require council approval. And council has provided quarterly financial reports to monitor the financial condition of the city. Next slide, please. So before we discuss the proposed budget at the next study session on Saturday, we wanted to give you an update as to the current fiscal performance and projections. So as Jeff mentioned earlier, planning for this fiscal year was very challenging as we were unsure as to what the impact of the pandemic would have on the economy. The council made some difficult decisions and we reduced our budget to attempt to account for this uncertainty. For example, our current year budgeted revenues are approximately $6 million less than our audited results from last year. So as noted in the chart here, some of the revenue losses originally anticipated were not realized to the extent expected. So some of the larger variances include, from other agencies, that line item shows an increase of $300,000 over budget as this includes the one-time funding we received from the Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, otherwise known as the CARES Act, which was reimbursed the city for expenses associated with pandemic assistance. So we received a total of $370,000 in CARES Act funding last fall. And the majority of this was applied to payments that council approved from the general fund to assist the community, including the SMC Strong Fund, One Life Counseling, Hearing Cupboard, Meals on Wheels and Neighbor to Neighbor. Some of the CARES Act funding was also returned to the housing fund for the payment that was made to the San Carlos Tenant Assistance Program. Our licenses and permit revenue is projected to be over budget by about $700,000. These fees include building, electrical, plumbing and mechanical permits. So the timing of when developers pull their permits can vary and as such, this amount can fluctuate. During the stay-at-home orders, some residents took the opportunity to make improvements to their homes while working remotely, which increased this particular revenue stream. It's possible that we may experience further growth in this line item depending on development activity between now and the end of the fiscal year. Property tax is projected to come in short of budget by about $600,000. And the primary reason for this drop is the tax increment revenue. So after the redevelopment agencies were dissolved in 2011, tax increment revenue that would have gone to the RDAs or the redevelopment agencies was deposited into the Redevelopment Property Tax Trust Fund, RPTTF. Those funds are then administered and distributed to local taxing agencies by the county. In May of last year, the California Court of Appeals changed the calculations for this distribution, which negatively impacted the amount of residual property tax the city will receive. For sales tax, this is projected to be higher than budget by about $700,000. So the large decreases in sales tax revenue that we projected at the start of the pandemic did not materialize to the level expected as businesses were able to modify their delivery of products and services to continue to serve their customers. The building construction sector within, with the increased price of lumber and the demand for home projects saw strong gains that remained consistent throughout the calendar year, which is also shown in our license and permits revenue. Exponential growth from the countywide tax pools further offset the declines. However, these gains in sales tax, while we're seeing them over budget, they're still projected to be less than a million, a million dollars less than last year's audited financial statements. Transient occupancy tax or hotel tax is also projected to be about $700,000 higher than budget. Although the shelter and place orders were in effect, hotels were still renting rooms to essential workers. So our occupancy rates didn't drop as much as we expected, resulting in increases over budget. However, again, it's important to note that these projections are still a million dollars less than the actual numbers we received last year. Other uses of money and property includes rentals, leases, digital billboards and investment earnings. This revenue is projected to be about $700,000 less than budget due to a larger-than-expected drop in interest rates and less revenue expected from our rental properties and digital billboards as a result of the pandemic. Vehicle and loo revenue is projected to come in $780,000 less than budget. The reason for this is due to a countywide shortfall in funding for this property tax and loo instead of motor vehicle license fees. So several years ago, the state changed the funding for motor vehicle fees and instead backfills it with property tax and loo. So every agency in the county is experiencing a similar reduction due to the number of non-basic aid school districts, which in turn leaves less funding available to the distribution to the cities. So this county is working with the state to recover these funds, but the soonest this would be repaid is next June. Expenditures are, so moving on to expenditures. Expenditures are projected to be close to a million dollars less than budget. And this is primarily due to holding vacant positions open and savings from the timing of professional services expenses tied to large-scale development projects. So although the city eliminated some vacant positions last fiscal year, there were still some funded positions that had vacancies or were underfilled this year, which resulted in savings. In addition to these vacancies or underfilled positions, there may be salary savings for employees who have not yet reached the top step of their positions. Next slide, please. So moving on to our budget and the performance measures. Several years ago, we transitioned from the departmental budgeting at a line item level to a full program and performance-based budget model. So tonight, each department will present their major program services, achievements from the current fiscal year, their performance measures and then their goals for the next fiscal years. So with that, Jeff, I understand we're going to take questions at this point.
Yes, thank you, Rebecca. So any questions at this point for Jeff or Rebecca on their presentations? All right. I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time. So I think we can move to the next presentation. Thank you very much, Jeff and Rebecca.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next will be the City Council and City Manager Department presentation. Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, council. I will be presenting both the City Council and the City Manager's budgets. We'll begin with the City Council budget. Our City Council is led by the five individuals you see here with our mayor and vice mayor leading the charge. They've all been elected to four-year terms and right now, we're in a great place. We have the newest council member, John Dugan, and he's getting up to speed very quickly. So we're very pleased to have him join this group. Next slide. Thank you. So the things that the council does, besides a million things that you just can't even begin to list here, is to look at what's happening at the state and federal level in terms of legislative activities. What bills are being presented, passed? What will impact San Carlos? What should the city support? What should we oppose to better serve our community? So that's a big undertaking that our department does along with the council under their direction. Also, the council establishes the policy for the city and provides direction as to how that policy is to be carried out. The council also, as we're doing this evening, does all of the budgeting in terms of setting the policy, ensuring that we are maintaining a fiscal, fiscally sustainable budget, that we are overseeing it and that we are always in good financial shape. The council also individually serves on various regional boards and commissions. And they also serve the community through active engagement. And this is very important to council. They've made it very clear during, over the years through their strategic planning, that engaging with the community is very important to the council. So not only do they become engaged, but staff is also engaged. And what's meant by engagement is that we're not only listening, but we're also actively discussing important issues, hearing from the community what they think about the positions and really trying to always do what we think is best to address those community needs. And finally, the strategic plan is something that the council does every year that Jeff already mentioned. But what's great about the timing of our strategic plan and our community surveys is that the council can really tie what the council thinks is important for us to be doing. is that the council can really tie what the council thinks is important for us to be doing to what the community feels we should be doing. Next slide, please. So what the accomplishments for 2020 and 2021 for the council? The first thing I need to mention is the COVID pandemic. That just kind of threw us through a loop. We already had kind of plans in mind, how we thought the year would look, but this happened to us in March. And this, the council took us on a journey responding to all the community needs, if it was needs for funding or needs for support. And we worked regionally with the county and other cities. And I, I, I just think the council's done a tremendous job on providing that leadership that both the city staff as well as the community has needed this year. So with more, regarding more to the strategic plan, the council has planned for changes in land use and economic development. Council has supported the creation of housing, and this includes inclusive housing, both for all turn, all kinds of economic levels, including low-income housing. And finally, the council has supported the expansion of childcare facilities. Next slide, please. The council has also pursued plans and strategies for improving mobility, traffic, parking, infrastructure for transportation, and street maintenance. And the council has prepared for public safety emergencies and other potential emergencies by developing and implementing risk mitigation and reduction strategies. Jeff already mentioned that we are really preparing for wildfire, and we've done that by having community meetings. We also did a lot of work on preparing for PG&E power shut-offs. And we're also continuing to do a lot of planning in terms of our climate mitigation and adaptation plan. So next slide, thank you. And council also has promoted access to youth programming and has implemented, implemented a number of sustainability initiatives, not only with the climate mitigation and adaptation plan, but also by adopting reach codes, electrification reach codes earlier this year. Next slide, please. So what we do is to look at the performance measures for council is how many boards and committees the council participates on. And in 2020, the number was 42, and 2021 projected is 35. This generally grows by one or two, depending upon what kinds of things have risen to the top in terms of priority for the community. So that might change as we move through 2021 into 2022. And then in our community satisfaction survey, we gauge how residents feel about how responsive the city is to them. And this is a good number, and we, we do, for the, what you see on this projected number is actually an actual because we did the survey already for 2021, and it has gone up. So the community as a whole feels good that the, that the council's listening to them. And then the percent of residents who feel that the city's efforts to provide municipal service are satisfactory, that usually hovers in this low 80s, and that's a very good number. If you'll recall back to when the surveyor provided the report to council on these numbers, that's a very high number amongst most cities that he had surveyed. And finally, the number of residents who indicate that they trust the city, this is also very high in terms of what other agencies are, are doing. So in the 70s is a good number, and we saw that it grew a little bit during the pandemic. Next slide, please. So the goals for '21, '20 to '23 will again be focused on the strategic plan. So the council plans to work with all interested members of the community to develop a plan to understand and ensure that the East Side and the downtown both meet the needs of the community and the businesses now and into the futures, the future in terms of land use, transportation, and economic development. The council also actively encourage and support the creation of inclusive housing. Next slide, please. The council will pursue plans and strategies for improving mobility, traffic, parking, transportation infrastructure, and street maintenance, as mentioned before, and also to prepare for public safety emergencies by having risk manage, risk mitigation and reduction strategies in mind. Next slide, please. Council will continue to provide leadership throughout the COVID-19 pandemic as we hope to end this thing before we're talking about the next budget next year. Also, council will be supporting the expansion of childcare facilities as well as promoting access to youth programming. And council will be implementing sustainability initiatives to address climate change. As again Jeff had mentioned, that we are working on the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan, which we hope to have council approval on later this year. Next slide, please. Okay, I can answer any questions about the council budget if there are.
All right, any questions from council? All right, I don't see any. Thank you so much, Tara. So our next presentation will be from City Attorney Greg Rubens.
No, actually, I'm going to do the City Manager's budget now.
Oh, got it. Oh, sorry.
I had two departments, so sorry about that confusion.
You threw me for a loop. All right, thank you.
We will be doing that to you a couple of times this evening. So the City Manager's budget, okay, we're moving a little forward. Okay, well, this is fine, we can stop there. So, so we have six individuals working in the apartment led by City Manager Jeff Maltby. We have a senior management analyst who handles many, many of the council as well as city special projects. We have a management analyst focused on communications, so he handles our social media, our website, all of our newsletters. And then we have a management analyst who's handling our, our, all of our climate mitigation and sustainability issues. And of course, we have Nakia, our executive assistant, without whom we couldn't do all of the work that we do. Next slide, please. All right, so the major services that our department provides is the management of the overall city operations, all the departments and our programs. We provide direct support to council. We oversee our community relations with engagement and public information, social media, website, and any special projects. We develop and manage the council's strategic plan, and we oversee the Climate Action Plan and Sustainability Programs. Next slide, please. So in 2020, 2021, we oversaw the city's COVID-19 pandemic response and the emergency operations, including increased community support. We expanded our spotlight-focused newsletter on the community to address really important issues of the day. We facilitated adoption of all-electric reach codes. We created a new community video series focused on how to safely bike. And then we coordinated community support initiatives to deploy during the PG&E PSPS events. Next slide, please. So here are some of the key performance measures that we track in our department. We generally have a community satisfaction survey each year, but due to the pandemic, council directed us to do one for 2021 as well. So usually, this is a one that we do every other year, but we did it two years in a row. Fortunately, a lot of things were very similar in terms of what the community felt the, that we had done in terms of, you know, providing the services that they need, et cetera. But it did also give us an opportunity to ask the community, you know, how COVID had affected them and what their needs might be. The percent of residents finding the city staff professional. Again, this is a number that's very high. While it did go down, we think that it might have gone down because just, the, just a less feeling of connectedness because City Hall wasn't open this year. They had to deal with this, with all of us virtually or on the phone. So I think we might have lost a couple of points because we weren't as face-to-face. The percent of residents satisfied with our services, again, in the low 80s, which is good. The strategic plan, plan tasks undertaken. So council had six in last year's plan, and we have seven in this year's plan. And the number of residents who agree that the city does a good job of keeping them engaged, which, as I mentioned, we do a lot of, of the community outreach from our department. And we're really happy to see that all of those spotlight newsletters and our other efforts have made a difference in how engaged the community feels with us. Next slide, please. So the number of climate action items monitored, this has been 21 for a number of years, but we do expect it to change once the council adopts the, the CMAP is what I'll refer to it. That's our Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan. The residential and commercial annual per capita disposal below the state target, that's yes. So that's really good news that we're keeping our disposal below this, what the state's requiring. The percent of reduction in greenhouse gas, community-wide since 2005. So we did reach the 25% as of 2018, and we're still on track to, to reach the 40% by 2030, but these might change with the CMAP. And finally, a percent reduction in greenhouse gases by our municipal government since 2005. We're definitely on track here, particularly since we acquire 100% renewable energy through PCE, peninsula clean energy. Next slide, please. So our goals for the coming year are to continue to oversee the city's COVID-19 pandemic response, emergency operation, and hopefully closeout of this phase in our history. We also plan to find new and creative ways to expand and improve our community engagement and involvement through our communications efforts. Next slide, please. We plan to complete and implement the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan and other climate-related activities. And we also plan to coordinate emergency management services, which include a lot of planning, hazard, hazard mitigation planning, things of that nature. Next slide, please. And with that, I can answer questions about the City Manager's department.
All right, thank you, Tara. Any questions for Tara at this point?
All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Tara. All right, next up is City Attorney Greg Rubens.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Cleverson City Council. This is my presentation for the budget for next year. Next, next slide, Crystal, please. I can't control it from where I am, I apologize. So my major services that the city attorney provides is, I basically act as the general legal counsel for the city. So I advise on all the contracts, attend all the city council and most planning commission meetings. I participate in the negotiation for development projects and participate in all the litigation involving the city, including code enforcement and claims and litigation either initiated by or filed against the city. Next slide, please. I'm also responsible for reviewing or drafting ordinances and resolutions of the council. Code enforcement, as I mentioned before. My office does a lot of work on Public Records Act, a tremendous amount. We're seeing more and more Public Records Act requests for, for emails and other documents that require a great deal of time by my deputy Kimberly Chu to, to help us work through the requests. As you know, Brown Act compliance, I make sure the agendas are in order, make sure that the agendas are posted in a timely manner. And, and as from time to time, you hear me talk about making sure our discussion stays within the posted agenda. And then election law, when, when we have an election, I advise the city clerk on that, on those issues. So for 2021, I might change the order a little bit. I think I spent most of my time on the city's COVID-19 pandemic response, starting in March of 2020, beginning with the hotel, as was mentioned earlier, and the starting of the EOC. But then the orders, as they changed during the course of the pandemic, I was charged with and provided advice and guidance on the changing rules and regulations that the city and the, and the business community was faced with. And then now I guess we're on the, what appears to be the better side of, of the pandemic, at least we're hoping that we're, we're seeing changes in the orders on, on the more liberal side and managing that and the expectations of the community of how that might work. We're hoping to see on June 15th that the, the governor's plans will, will take place and will have, will be through the blueprint for the safer economy that we're, that we're in right now. So I am, one of the other things I did were the safe harbor procedure for agenda setting arising out of a, of a case in the North Bay. That case actually was beneficial because it created a, a safe harbor for agenda setting that the city can, and the city council can stay out of concern of the Brown Act by identifying in advance what the agenda item for consideration might be at a meeting. This PG&E settlement that resulted, the second settlement with PG&E that resulted in an additional $1 million to the city general fund out of the ex parte violations that occurred. And ex parte is, there's rules at the CPUC that, that, that utilities, including PG&E, must abide by, and they were caught violating those rules. And it resulted in a, an additional settlement of which San Carlos received $1 million last year. And that was additionally, there was another layer because PG&E went bankrupt. So we, I, I was able to locate a bankruptcy council to help, help us navigate through the, through the bankruptcy court to make sure that our claim was not discounted as a general creditor. So that was a good result there. Again, drafted and assisted in preparing ordinances that the council directed or is required by state law and advised the Planning and Building Department on the projects, such as the appeal we talked about earlier and, and other larger projects that are coming to the city that may require development agreements or other types of interpretation. When, you know, when the sheriff issues a citation for a municipal code violation, that, that the, the, the citation is delivered to my office, and then we process those citations. And under the code, any violation of the city code is a, is considered a misdemeanor, but I have the authority on certain violations to reduce those items to an infraction, which I will consider if it's not a repeat offender. And the, the violation is not willful, I'll look at that, I look at those issues to make sure that, you know, for an example, you know, a lot of the complaints I, or a lot of citations are issued for people in the parks after hours, and sometimes it's young people or sometimes it's people who are visiting the city and they're not aware of our, of our closures of the parks at sunset. So if, if it's something that's inadvertent and it's reflected in the report, they, that probably in most cases is reduced to an infraction. And then we get a, we, we do have, we do have claims for liability where, where people claim injuries against the city. And so I'm, I'm monitoring with our defense council that's hired by Plan JPA to defend us. And, and I, I'm actually trying to be pretty active in those because I think my experience adds to better settlements for the city in a more prompt and reasonable manner. And then we can go on to the next slide. So accomplishments last year. We, we have, there was a, I supervised outside counsel for an eminent domain matter that's involved a property that the city now has possession of. And I, when, when I, when I receive citizens' complaints, I, I try to have, although it's hard in the, in the world we're in now, an open-door policy for the citizens to contact me and ask me questions about issues that, or complaints that they may have. I provided, I provided advice and guidance on a, on a significant appeal that the council heard earlier in the year at 622 Walnut. We were proactively addressed the eucalyptus holiday issues for the 2020 in light of the pandemic and some of the anticipated issues we might see, given that people were locked down. some of the anticipated issues we might see, given that people were locked down, unable to travel out of town or visit family. We actually did anticipate that there might be more activity in that area, and we tried to address it as best we could. And then given this is maybe related to the pandemic, but we did earlier in the year had a lot of telecom companies eagerly wanting to put in more more antennas in town to accommodate the increased traffic from from all the people working from home. And one of the companies identified some of the PG&E utility poles that were overloaded, and so they couldn't place their their equipment on overloaded poles. And so we developed a temporary plan that while when PG&E replaces a pole, they can go back on the on the on the main pole and and it and and we worked with PG&E to to have a reasonable timeline for that to happen. Excellent, please. So I there's performance measures that my office has, but I don't think they really address the breadth of the services that I provide, but they they were the the types of performance measures that we can objectively analyze. What we try, I try to update the council on on updates with case law, but in 2020 there were, there was there were no live city attorney conferences, and so that affected the the number of updates that you received. The monitoring of the outside counsel and dollar amounts, I anticipate that that might go up next year because of the amount of development that's going on in town. The code enforcement is pretty steady over the years. We just seems like we get a number of cases and citations and different things. And so it requires some effort on our staff's part and my Kimberly Chu, my deputy, to to help analyze that. You can see there were 53 code enforcement cases last year. Each one of those requires some handling and then there that we, a lot of those are the in-house cases that we handle, the code enforcement and the and the Public Records Act requests. Five, five of the cases, I mean, most of the code enforcement cases don't go to trial, so this is not included in that. Civil cases. None of the cases went to trial. They all we all settled all of them. And then you can see the hours on public record requests and the amount of money that the city has to spend evaluating those. And so goals for 2023. We see with the planning and building department, I foresee a lot of work in in those developments. I see a lot of work and effort on our office's part to deal with the East Side Visiting Plan and affordable housing projects that are and units that are going to be becoming before the planning commission and the city council. And next slide. There's, I think we will continue to work with the fire department concerning disaster preparedness and and fire preparedness issues. The COVID response is not quite over yet. I'm anticipating that it will continue. The issues that we will be addressing from the city attorney's department will continue through the rest of 2021. And possibly beyond that, it just depends on what the the course of the of the disease is and can the governor's declaration of emergency when that ends. And we have ongoing negotiation and amendments on our on our public safety contracts. Excellent, please. And I'm available to answer any questions you might have about my services.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone from council wish to ask any questions of Greg Rubens? Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Greg, thanks for the presentation. And I just had to one question and one to sort of comment for your, I'll start the comment on your projected sort of items you think you're going to be working on for the next year. I think that that I would suggest that potentially add the downtown into that. Laurel Street, we've got some, and some of it is COVID related, but we have talked about more specific long term potential looking at some long term solutions that I think should be added to that list as well. And then I just, can you clarify for me on the in park after dark enforcement? Because we've got, obviously, assume there's, you know, people have permits to be there because you've got lighting, if there's games or sports events or things like that, that that's sort of covered separately by the code. And then you know, does that, so if I'm just there walking around in Burton Park because I want to get some exercise after dark and the lights are on because there's a game, how does that play into that? I mean, if I'm just sort of an individual citizen taking advantage of the lights being on because someone has a permit to play softball?
Well, I mean, if the lights are on, the parks aren't closed, they're still open even, you know, might be there's the lights at the at our lighted fields are supposed to turn off at 10, but there is still some unpacking and people getting ready to go. It's a complaint driven process. So when I the complaints I see are really at our our more natural parks like Eaton Park and Upper Arguello Park and Big Canyon Park where where there's, there's not play facilities or things that people would be doing there. It's, it's, you know, we, it's, we get a complaint that people are in the park and making noise late at night and for whatever Eaton Park is, has a very attractive area where a lot of people tend to go at night because they have a good view of the of the Bay Area and the lights. And that's where I get where the most of the complaints are, but but Arguello Park, Big Canyon and Crest Street Park get their share of complaints, too.
Got it. Understood. Oh, that's that's helpful. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I'm not seeing any additional questions, Greg. Thank you for your presentation. All right. So next up is City Clerk Department, Crystal Mui, City Clerk.
Good evening, council. I'm Crystal Mui, your city clerk. Forward here. My department consists of two full time employees, myself and my administrative assistant, Monica. And our department operates under the one program, which is the council and city manager support. Our major services include managing the city council agenda process as well as providing meeting support. So that includes preparing and publishing notices prior to the meeting. And after the meetings, we have duties such as preparing the minutes as well as tasks such as publishing the required notices for ordinances. We also manage recruitment for our city commissions and boards and facilitating an orientation for each new member. As the elections officer for the city, we're responsible for administration of cities municipal election. So that includes assisting residents through the elections process so that we can qualify them as candidates for councilor, the treasurer seat. We also serve as the compliance officer for Fair Political Practices Commission. And so the main task there is to ensure the timely filing of election forms and the statements of economic interest for our designated city officials. Our department also serves as the records manager for the for the city. So as such, we assist with research of records for staff as well as researching records to satisfy public records requests. We maintain the records retention schedule so to ensure that it's up to code and assist departments with the timely destruction of their records. We also manage city citywide volunteer program, and this includes placing of individual and group volunteers and coordinating events such as the Volunteer Expo and the annual volunteer recognition dinner. And then we also process the incoming and outgoing mail for all the city departments. Okay, so accomplishments for this past year at the top of the list was transitioning all our council meetings to a virtual setting in order to keep everyone safe, yet provide a way for the community to easily participate and provide their comments and stay engaged. The process required a few tweaks along the way, but I feel that it we found a good good process that works well for everyone here. So I'm happy to to report that. I'm especially proud of my department of two in that we were able to continue providing services to the city and our community during the the past years as we all navigated through this pandemic. As you're aware, we had a municipal election in 2020 for the election of two council seats and a city treasurer. So we're able to safely meet with all the interested residents and provide assistance for those who qualified as candidates. And then virtually getting all our newly elected officials on boarded. We also updated the city's conflict of interest code and the citywide records retention schedule. Also this year, we coordinated commission recruitments for five seats and provided orientations to eight newly appointed commission members. This was the first year that we implemented the new process of having an alternate member and an eligibility list, both which served us really well since we had some unscheduled vacancies that came up in the fall. We continued to digitize various city records and got them into our electronic document management system. So that made it easier for staff to access records while they were working remotely and also helped with us to process records retention, records requests remotely. So speaking of public records requests, we responded to we're estimating 450 plus records requests this fiscal year. So we're able to respond to those in a timely manner. And lastly, we implemented an electronic filing system for the Fair Political Practices Commissions, the conflict of interest statements, as well as the campaign statements. And we're currently working on a web portal to make those statements available to the public. So key performance measures, we'll be showing these for the next few slides. These measures show that despite the pandemic, we were able to continue with business. You'll see that for agendas prepared. I can't see my slide here. So for agendas prepared and for public meetings supported in we're projecting in fiscal year 2021 to have slightly lower numbers than what we had for our actuals in 2020. That's due to the fact that in our virtual meetings, we hold our closed sessions on the same agenda as our regular meetings. Pre pandemic, our closed sessions were held in special meetings, so that's required separate agenda and minutes preparation and posting. The number of resolutions, ordinances and proclamations, as you'll see, is slightly lower in 21 than our actuals in 2020. As mentioned earlier, we had one election this fiscal year, and I met with nine interested residents, five of which decided to proceed with the running. And due to our, due to the pandemic, commission recruitments in 2020 were delayed to 2021. And at that time, we recruited for five seats and I facilitated an orientation for eight new commissioners. And I want to just take a quick pause right here because I want to make a quick plug that we currently have a vacancy on our Economic Development and Advisory Commission. So if there's any members of the public watching tonight who may be interested in that, please check out our website, cityofSanCarlos.org slash current openings for information about what that commission does and for the details on on that recruitment. Since fiscal year 2015, records requests have substantially been increasing each year. In 2015, we had 222 requests, and that went up to 518 by fiscal year 2019. So in fiscal year 2020, you'll see that we received and responded to 472 records requests. With the pandemic, the number of requests dipped slightly, but not that, not by that much. We're projecting in fiscal year 2021 to have about 465 records requests. I should note that not only have the number of records requests gone up, but the complexity of those requests also. So I work very closely with with Greg's office on those. In 2020, we had 70 banker boxes that contained permanent records scanned and indexed into our document management system. In 2021, we were able to take care of 10 digitizing of those boxes. And we have just over 600 banker boxes off site. And so I'm looking forward next year to ramping up our scanning project again, once we're back in the office, so that we can continue to get those records digitized. In addition to continuing to provide our many core services, our goal for the next fiscal year is to obtain a public records request system that would assist with managing the city's records requests. With the records request system, departments can compile the responsive records in one central area so that my office and if needed, the city attorney's office can review, redact and then produce those records. The streamlined process would help staff work more efficiently and also cut down on the production time and making it easier for the public to access the records. So once we identify a system that works for us, I'll also be working on implementing the system and then training all the users throughout all the departments on how to use the system. Although this project is not part of the council strategic strategic plan, it does address the council's goal of aligning staff and resources with the demand for city services. So I'm looking forward to to getting that started. And that concludes my presentations. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Crystal. Any questions for City Clerk Mui? All right. Thank you, Crystal. Very much appreciated. So our next presentation is on the Administrative Services Department. We'll be hearing from Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Rebecca?
Good evening again. Thank you. Good evening again. Crystal, you can, next slide, please. So my department can best be described as the background of the city. Next slide, please. We have 15 employees and that make up four different divisions of our department. We have administration and risk management, financial services, human resources and information technology. Next slide, please. So our administration and risk management division provides strategic planning and special projects oversight. The city is one of 28 member agencies who make up the pooled liability assurance network or PLAN, Joint Powers Authority or JPA. So members collectively participate in risk sharing programs that have proven to reduce the frequency and amount of losses. Each member has one representative on the board, and in addition to a general board member, we also serve on the executive committee and the claims committee. In addition to the PLAN JPA, the city is also one of five agencies who make up the city's group JPA, which is a workers' compensation program. Just like PLAN, each member has a seat on the board of directors. So both of these pooled programs offer the city a number of training and development opportunities to reduce our risks, which in turn create a safer work environment for our employees. Next slide, please. Our finance division is made up of six employees who not only provide general financial support, including accounts payable and accounts receivable to the city, but we also serve as the financial services provider to two other agencies, the City County Association of Governments or CCG and commute.org. In addition to those financial services of paying bills and collecting revenues, finance also processes payroll biweekly and manages the audit and financial reporting, including the the preparation of the budget document, which we're working on right now. We manage the investments and we also manage the business registration function. Next slide, please. Our human resources division is made up of two employees who oversee all of the recruitment and hiring activities, benefits administration and employee and labor relations. Our information technology division is made up of four employees who manage to help desk for all the employees and assist the council members and the commission members. They support our network infrastructure and maintain the security of our internal systems. Next slide, please. So a few of our accomplishments over the last year include the renegotiation of the communications or the dispatch agreement with the county of San Mateo. That's going to be coming forward for council approval later in May. We've developed several comprehensive programs and plans in connection with the COVID-19 pandemic, including the Respiratory Protection Program, the Infectious Disease Outbreak Response Program and the COVID prevention program. And in the past few weeks, we've expanded the claims process to include in the And in the past few weeks, we've expanded the claims process to include in the electronic submission of claims. Our finance division has spent countless hours working with our FEMA consultants to report our losses and submit reimbursement requests. We've participated in the Silicon Valley Clean Water, S V C W, W F I A and S V R, S F, or S F R loan refunding. Which resulted in direct savings for our S R F, sorry, S R F refunding was. Resulted in direct savings to our ratepayers. So earlier when I talked about our enterprise fund, this is all related to our sewer fund. So savings here has a direct impact on our ratepayers. Next slide. Last year, the council approved a contract with HDL companies to outsource our transient occupancy tax or hotel tax collection process. So in addition to streamlining the reporting process for those hotels. HDL is now going to provide compliance audits to ensure that the hotels will be audited at least once every three years. And as discussed earlier tonight, last June, three of our four bargaining units agreed to concessions through employee negotiations. Next slide. So our bargaining units also agreed to a temporary telework policy that was literally implemented overnight in March of last year. I T was able to image and deploy laptops to staff so they could work safely from home. And in addition to the equipment that was deployed, I T implemented Office 365 and Microsoft Teams. Which has had a huge impact in remaining engaged with our remote staff. We also upgraded the council chambers digital equipment, the emergency operations center hardware. And the backup system and also upgraded the phone system. So the phone system upgrade allows staff to answer their phones from their desks or their laptops if they're not in the office. Next slide. So I won't go through in detail all of our performance measures. But these measures were chosen as a way to monitor our volume of activity as well as the quality of our work. And two particular things I want to point out on this slide are that we consistently meet the requirements in our financial reporting. To receive both the government finance officers association or G F O A awards for our budget and our annual financial reports. Next slide. So these measures with regard to human resources help us determine how well our recruiting efforts have been. So as you can see, this past year, our numbers dropped as a result of holding some vacant positions open. In addition, we were not able to offer as many in-person trainings as we've done in the past. So those numbers we anticipate will go back up as we return to normal. And with the pandemic, a lot of trainings have now moved from in person to online. And so we see some of those numbers going up as well. Our I T measures were selected to track how many calls we receive for service and how well we're able to maintain our systems and our infrastructure. Next slide. So our goals for the next couple of years include providing support to our employees as we transition back to the office in the few months. We're going to review and update any safety plans as needed. And consistently watch the CDC guidelines, the state guidelines, the county guidelines. To ensure that all of our plans and our policies are in compliance with those. We're going to implement the new cashiering system and the contracts modules that were recently approved by the council. And we're going to update the cash handling procedures as needed to support that new module. Next slide. In addition to those new software modules, we're going to be completing a major upgrade of our existing financial system, which is Munis. And that runs our G L, our A R A P. And also work with community development to update our permitting system, which is TrackIt. And that's the permitting system for community development and public works. We'll also be working with public works to expand our G I S functionality and the use of that. And we'll be looking at options to enhance our fixed asset and our capital asset tracking systems. In human resources, we'll be working on the upcoming labor negotiations for all four of our bargaining units. And we'll also be introducing new employee wellness training opportunities to help our employees emerge back from the pandemic. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rebecca. All right. It looks like we've got Vice Mayor McDowell, followed by Councilmember Rec.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Rebecca, for your excellent presentation. My question for you, I have two questions, actually. My first is where you noted the upgraded council chambers with new digital equipment. Does that contemplate at some point the council returning to chambers? And then somehow doing a hybrid option where members of the public could still call in from home? And what, what kind of equipment might, I don't know, would that encompass that option right now?
We're looking at that. Right now, this was to upgrade our digital soundboard, which hadn't been upgraded for many, many years. So it's something that we are looking at. I believe the capability is there, but it would. It's more about the integration with all of the software and the training involved that we really need to look at.
Okay, great. And it's also mentioned that the E O C hardware was updated. What, could you just give a little more information about how the E O C was upgraded?
So we did a complete remodel of the E O C. We've added new display panels, new TVs. And also projector was updated. We moved all of the, the network cables and such. And have been looking at the laptops and things that are in the room as well.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Rec.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Rebecca, thanks for the great presentation. A couple, like three super fast questions for you. I'll start one. Do we, I noticed you had talked about some audits around the T O T. Do we do any kind of audit processing around sales tax revenue for us?
Sales tax is done by our third party provider, HDL companies. They're also the ones that do T O T. So they do the compliance audits and they work with the, with the state.
Okay. And are those the same way? They're sort of every three years that we sort of on a cycle to do that auditing? Or is it a different process for that?
For sales tax, that looks a little different because it's based on a complaint basis. So if there's a complaint that comes in or if they hear of a company, like in the past, we've had. Some, you know, we, we meet with HDL every quarter and we go through our sales tax numbers. And if we see that there's a business that's not on there that should be, or it's been reported in the wrong agency. They'll go and they'll work with the state to make sure that it's done. It's recorded.
Okay. And the, and the T O T, it's a three year, it's sort of all, because we have a limited number of hotels, for example, like all, it's sort of all in one shot. It's every three years they do it versus staggered.
Well, no, they stagger it. So it'll be over three years. So it'll be like one hotel at a time.
Okay. And then my last, got it. That makes sense. I appreciate that. And I know, so because we've got a new hotel coming online, hopefully soon, that's like construction going on. So hopefully that'll, that makes sense to stagger it. My last question is, I know we also included minimum wage enforcement. As part of our last, when we raised the minimum wage, I didn't hear you mention anything about that. And I just want to understand that, assuming that that's in place right now and sort of what the process is around that, given that we've. In January, raised the minimum wage.
So that is in place. That's actually, we've outsourced that to a. Yeah, I think it's the city of San Jose.
Right. Okay, so that's ongoing on process, but we haven't, it just started. So we don't have any sort of data around that, I assume at this point, given that we just, just raised it in January.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Rebecca. I'm not seeing any additional hands raised. Thank you for the presentation. And next up, we have community development department. Al Savay, community development director, will be giving the presentation this evening. Welcome, Al.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. Next, please. Thank you. This is our organizational chart. And as you can see, we have four division heads who spend a great deal of time and effort overseeing and. Training the work of our people and they do quality control of documents and manage a wide range of consultants. As the same time as managing their direct reports. And in our business model, we've kept our city employee roster lean for many years and we tend to do more with less. We've used this model where we have contract help to bridge the gap. And full-time planners and inspectors, however, and you see a number of different inspectors. And we have an associate, an assistant and a principal, full-time staff members. That will ensure a broader span of control and it's much more likely. That someone's going to stay longer with the city. And the model is a strong one if we keep this core group. Internal to the organization and the community can benefit from the institutional knowledge that's built over time. Next, please. So in terms of our major services, managing the development of our city. You know, we know that the look and feel of our community is a big part of our quality of life. And we use our training and expertise to apply things like the zoning ordinance, design guidelines, the general plan. To assure that our community maintains its character. And managing the development activity of the city includes taking in applications and reviewing them. Project management and the issuance of permits and inspections. In terms of public health and safety. This is a key component of our building inspection authority and the protection of our quality of life in our community. And as you know, we're required by law to enforce the state building codes. And through code enforcement. Our community clean and safe, which in turn helps us maintain our property values in a sense of community pride. We have a plan for economic sustainability and we work to find ways to improve the affordability of our housing stock. And we staff numerous committees in the planning commission. And this requires a great deal of preparation, administration and technical reporting. Next, please. So our major services are divided up into three divisions, really four now. We had current planning for many years. We just created a new division, advanced planning. To take care of some of the advanced planning efforts like the general plan, housing element and the east side plan. And we foresee more of these plans in the coming years. We have building and code enforcement, economic development, housing and of course, current planning. And I'll be talking a little bit about each of these divisions. Next. So over the next few slides, I'll touch on accomplishments that tell the story about the work that we do. And each of these accomplishments requires us to shift gears. And access a whole other set of complementary skills from problem solving to collaboration. And many of the things that we do require entrepreneurial thinking, creativity, strategic use of our expertise. And staff resources. We need to be able to respond to city council's strategic objectives. But also the slate of legislation that's coming down from Sacramento like never before. As you can see there, we're focusing on some long-range projects, the housing and safety element updates and the innovation district vision plan. But our new A D U ordinance is an example of how a significant change in legislation. That through collaborative efforts, it can be adapted between our communication with the community, the commissions and our city council. And in response to the, the city council's childcare initiative, we work to do things like. Remove minor permit requirements and allow commercial childcare by right in several zoning districts. And we modified operating restrictions for childcare centers as well. Next. Now in terms of some other accomplishments, I'm going to focus on a few. And not many small cities really have the wherewithal on staff to put together a public-private partnership. To get affordable housing unit, units built. And using the city's property, we helped select a partner and joined in financing this unique and exciting project. And this is really a big accomplishment and it shows that San Carlos can do this. And it opens the door to new possibilities and confidence in our capabilities from nonprofit partners. That we may want to work with in the future. We have a new family-based workforce housing project, which is super exciting on Cherry Street with a new set of partners. And thank you to the city council for your guidance and support on this Cherry Street project. And without your support of these projects, they just wouldn't happen. Next. Attendance of regional meetings is important so that we can stay up on regional policy and legislative development. As well as new sources of state and federal grant funding. And an example of this is we aggressively pursue grant funding. And one example is the general plan, housing element update. Where we secure about $310,000 to help with the $800,000 cost of the general fund. And we continue to seek funding for that project. And we'll let you know if we get some more grants for that. But San Carlos is really a larger whole geographically. And we're flanked by other cities, San Mateo County, there's open space districts and a couple of water districts. We really need to be able to tell our story to these entities to ensure fair treatment of our community. So when we know intergovernmental meetings. They're really key to staying engaged and informed on what's happening and how it could affect our city. We also need to keep on top of regional events. Regional planning with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and the Association of Bay Area Governments, for example. We need to continuously be on top of these policy developments and make sure that we understand how they can affect or benefit our community. Next. Our day-to-day service operations, I'm going to talk about that more in just a moment. But it's the work that takes up the lion's share of our staff resources. However, you don't hear too much about it and that's really a good thing. And our performance relative to city council's strategic goals and objectives. Is something that maybe more people come into contact with, aside from kitchen remodels and remodeling your home. As it affects the long-term quality of life in our community. And the hallmark of our efforts includes the broadest possible community outreach that we can muster. And the larger community basics in the first three bullet points not only require professional expertise in planning. Analytics, economics, but also a highly skilled project team with management expertise. We've been making strong progress on the general plan in the east side vision plan. And we've had some very in-depth and well-attended community meetings. And some of these meetings are better attended than we have had in many years. And what I'm really excited about, if you're looking for a silver lining in the pandemic. Is, is it's the use of these virtual platforms. And we're finding new tools and new ways for people to feel comfortable. Going to our community meetings and interacting. So it's really something that we're very pleased with. Next. In terms of community development, the core function. And really the area where we spend about 75% of our staff resources. Is on managing development activity of the city. And so this is the part of the iceberg that's below the surface of the water. If a city doesn't have and professional staff with a mission of providing excellent customer service. You won't be successful over time in terms of new housing, commercial, retail or economic development. And in community development, we've been fine tuning our service model for many years. And I believe we're highly regarded in San Mateo County. For our collaborative approach to building permits and inspections. Next, please. So the day-to-day operations of the planning division include application intake and review. And of course, the issuance of permits and we do site inspections, much like building inspectors. Our planners go out into the field and one component that makes, takes a significant effort from our planners. Our planners go out into the field and one component that makes, takes a significant effort from our planners and our inspectors is making sure that these projects conform to the conditions and the permit requirements once a project is approved. We need to ensure that these projects are built right and that they look the same as they do on the plans. And we have successfully balanced our staff resources to do this well and also maintain a reputation as a business-friendly department and community. Now, the majority of our time and resources in planning and building is devoted to serving at the development services counter. And once we open back, I think things are going to normalize and we anticipate more images like the one that you see on the screen there, which was taken just before we left for the pandemic with a full lobby. And also in charge of helping develop plans and policies for your consideration. And those are what we call the long range, our plan, the zoning, the land use regulations, the housing element. Once those plans are complete though, they don't just sit on a shelf. They also need to be implemented, implemented in our plans are used regularly and they're put into action. So that's really a big part of preparing the plan, but also implementing them and making sure new development conforms to those plans. Next. Now, the two bullet points that you see there at the top of the screen, I just want to highlight a little bit here. As COVID began and we left the office, building and planning divisions throughout the region had to pivot in short order. The first weeks, it was really nerve wracking essentially. And we talked collectively with other cities. I know the planning and community development directors, the cities and the county. We were on the phone on a basis. I know the building officials were as well. And it was a time to share information and potential strategies for how to shift gears into a totally different methodology of processing these permits and working with folks and staying healthy. I mean, our folks are the ones that along with Public Works and others, other first responders, go out in the field and how do we keep ourselves healthy? But we were able to innovate and adapt using new tools for virtual inspections and electronic plan submittal and review processes very quickly. And it's really impressive how quickly and effectively our staff made this transition into these new permitting platforms and adapted in the face of adversity. And this could have been a disaster, but this, in our department, this accomplishment is really something that I think we should be proud of and great. And I think that we're going to be using any of these systems in years to come. Next. So in terms of the performance measures, I'm not going to focus on every one, but there's a few that I think are key. And so I'll do that for the rest of the presentation. But in terms of the number of development-related inquiries received and addressed, you see the numbers there and number of applications reviewed, we, number of building permits. But in terms of the inquiries alone, we have an assistant and associate planner who are essentially working the counter every day and the people are coming in or they're sending emails and making phone calls. And so that's a good deal of our job is to respond to those inquiries and make sure that people have the information they need. In terms of the number of permits issued, I think Rebecca mentioned it earlier, but we've seen a fair stabilization in the number of permits issued year over year, which was a little bit surprising. But as I think she may have mentioned, folks are staying home and they're taking more time to do some remodels on their homes and even some businesses are as well. And we conduct thousands of inspections each year. Next. In terms of code enforcement, we upped the hours that we spend on code enforcement over the last year. They can also funded an additional 20 hours of code enforcement in the last budget cycle. And we resolve cases very quickly and were able to resolve them in a timely manner and get more done. Next, please. This is about the number of inspections that folks need to do. Sometimes we need to go out several times depending on the complexity of the project. And there's different variations in percentages depending on how many times we go out on the various types of buildings that we look at. Next. These key performance measures allow or show the responsibilities we have as staff to a number of decision-making bodies, such as the planning commission and the city council. Each time we meet with or staff one of these groups, our work includes things like administration, analysis, coordination with other departments, preparation of reports and recommendations and agendas and meeting logistics. We make presentations, meeting minutes, and we follow up. And it also requires professional experience and expertise to run these commissions year over year. Next. In terms of some of our goals, development agreement tool is used by many cities to negotiate and lock in community benefits of larger key development projects. And we've used this on a number of different occasions over the years for projects such as the Palo Alto Medical Foundation, Wheeler Plaza and Meridian 25. And we'll need this tool once again for some of the larger projects on the east side who will be asking for adjustments to our zoning code. Essentially, it's a contract between the city and the developer to make sure that everyone does what they're supposed to do and we get the services and benefits that we're entitled to. Next. One of the things that started a year or two ago was to meet with a group of local architects on a quarterly basis in the area of residential review. And they approached, a couple of them approached the city and said, hey, we really need some clarification on what we're doing. And so a year or two ago, we started to meet with this group on a regular basis. And what we do is we exchange ideas for how to work better and to continually assess our review processes and application materials. And it's been very effective, I think, for both parties. And something in terms of updating our RDRC, our single-family development applications and standards, something that we've recently become aware of, and I'll touch on it on the mixed use of multifamily projects as well, is there's new state legislation. And we're going to, and what we're just now finding out is things like state bill 330, we're going to have to make changes to the way that we review all housing projects from single-family to multifamily housing projects. And again, this is very new. And what it requires is a city to adopt objective standards in the review of development projects. And it also streamlines the review process for cities as well. So this is really a game changer bill and we'll be coming forward and talking to you more about that in the coming months. And we'll also be coming forward with adjustments to our heritage street ordinance in the next month or two at the council's request. Next, please. For cities, economic development is an important ongoing program to mean economic stability. And by help, and this helps to increase the dollars available for things like community programs, jobs and facilities. And it starts with well-considered analytics and research, understanding of fiscal impacts of our policies as well as marketplace dynamics. And this all requires careful thought and deliberation and consideration. At any point in time, any of the points on this slide might rise to the top. And it really depends on what's needed at the time and what the council's needs are in terms of your strategic objectives. Next. We've been working with our Economic Development Advisory Committee on a new economic development plan, a draft plan. And once their work is concluded, we'll be bringing it to the city council for your consideration. And our staff has worked really hard to provide access to the tools and programs developed to help both renters and businesses in town during the pandemic. And this has required a shift in our staff time and resources, but it's very gratifying to know that we're assisting our residents and businesses in any way that we can. Next, please. And this is our performance measures for economic development. Some of the things that these show, for instance, is how the number of businesses has grown or retracted in our community, how sales and hotel taxes have changed. And as we heard earlier, this does impact the general fund, how rental rates and vacancies are changing, giving a snapshot of how constrained and competitive the local market is. And how many off-the-cuff inquiries are received from the investment community showing how much investment interest is changing over time. Next. So in terms of working on recovery aspects, we talked about that. As you know, we have a new chamber of commerce and the businesses are migrating over to the new chamber of commerce. We've started to have discussions with the leadership and some of the committees there. And we really look forward to establishing a strong relationship with our chamber. We also attract and retain revenue-producing businesses in the city. And this is very important over time. And to continue on talking to the businesses that we have and when new businesses come to town, meeting with them and talking with them as well. Next, please. All our employees in community development work across divisions and departments. And this is one of the keys, I think, to the success of the department. And that's why you see the goal of supporting in economic development, of supporting the downtown planning initiative and the parklets and other initiatives in the city. We all work together as a team and that's how we're able to accomplish a lot of different things. Next, please. In terms of our major services in housing, we do collect housing impact and in Lufy's. And we're using it to get new units built, as we discussed earlier in the community. We administer affordable housing funds and the grants that the city council approves every year in the budget. And we review and approve below-market rate plans as well. And we're working with the city council housing subcommittee on our new below-market rate draft plan and ordinance. And we'll be bringing that forward to you. We have more work to do with our housing community. Next, please. In terms of some of the accomplishments, I've talked about some of the affordable housing projects in our community. And we're excited to see 817 walnut come out of the ground. We're developing a new partnership with Hip Housing and Eden Housing for the affordable housing project on Cherry Street. And so these are some of the accomplishments, but they're also ongoing projects that we'll be working on in the coming year or so. Next, please. So some of these measures illustrate how many households are moving into BMR units, how many units the city is directly managing and monitoring, the number of entities the city awards annual grant support funds to, the status of the BMR waitlist, and the total number of BMR units currently developed in the city. Next, please. So in terms of our goals, we still have a lot of work to do with Hip Housing and Eden Housing, but we're making really good progress. And as I noted, we're really energized about that project as well. We are working with our city council housing subcommittee on our inclusionary BMR ordinance and making some changes there and adopting a strategy for acquiring below-market rate units and then converting them to below-market rate units in the future. Next, please. And that concludes the community development presentation. And I'm available to answer questions as is our division staff.
All right. Thank you, Al. Appreciate that. Looks like we had council member Rack raise his hand first and then followed by council member Dugan, so.
All right. I'm getting fast here at this. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Al, thanks for the presentation, all the great work. I mean, you obviously have a pretty expansive portfolio to be working on and thank you for everything around that. My question is just, I just want to focus in around the housing aspect of things. Can you give me a timeframe? I feel like regarding the, some of the housing policy updates, I feel like this has sort of been an ongoing process for quite some time. And I know we're looking at two-year goals, so I'd be really concerned if this was going to push into the next fiscal year sort of the 22, 23 fiscal year versus this current, this upcoming fiscal year. Can you give me a sense on timing?
Sure. And there's a couple that we're working on that are sort of at the forefront. And one of them is the below-market rate ordinance that we've been working with the housing subcommittee on. And we do have a timeline for that and that's on a fairly quick timeline. As soon as we get it out of the, out of the subcommittee, and as you know, we met recently, we have a little more work to do, some more data to take a look at. But once we get out of the subcommittee, we'll be able to bring that forward to the planning commission and city council very quickly. So it's not, I wouldn't say that it's certainly not going to go into the next year. You know, we might be able to get it done in the next quarter or quarter and a half on the BMR side. And then the other big one is the general plan, housing element update. And really that's the, that is the governing document for city policy as it relates to housing and also safety in terms of the things that we're doing there. And because it's such a, it really is a monumental task. And that's why you've devoted so many resources and dollars to that. We're one of the first cities in the region, if not the first, to undertake the the general plan, housing element update. And that's a two-year cycle. I believe we're maybe four to six months into that cycle right now. So we've got about another year and a half of work on that project. But I'd be happy to answer any more specific questions about other housing policies. We, as I noted in the presentation, I'd like to add that we did complete the accessory dwelling unit ordinance this last.
So just as a quick follow-up, Al, on this. So just one of the things we've talked about in the past year or two is addressing, maybe looking at increasing the overall housing stock through requiring sort of minimum density in some areas to provide that. Is that something that falls in a sort of a quick or shorter term or a longer term sort of housing element approach?
Yeah, that work is in the housing element. So that's part of the scope of work. And we need to be able to show you and the community what it looks like. So we're looking at things like building heights, we're looking at parking, we're looking at the scale and massing of buildings and the density of buildings. And what does it take to make a development marketable? And how much land do you need to make the dial change? So yes, that is part of the housing element update. But we're at the point of doing case studies. We've had two community meetings on the general plan, very well attended. We received some great comments. And now we're going to be showing the community what we heard and the areas that they've told us that they would see as acceptable areas to develop in our community and how to do it.
Thank you. And then just really quickly, I just want to make sure from the, one of the issues is, I know you saw the density bonus. There's a few projects coming up around the density bonus. And I had mentioned my concern before that our curtain ordinance, we lose out on affordable housing because of it, because we don't calculate the density bonus. And I had sent some stuff. And I had sent some stuff to you that Senator Becker's office had researched on that. And so is that something that would be included in the BMR ordinance that you're working on specifically? Because that relates to sort of, perfect. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you both. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, Al, thank you for the overview. Yeah, good work in a challenging year, particularly appreciated your highlighting the public-private partnerships and the good work. And I agree, that is a unique capability of San Carlos and eight seventeen walnut, good win for the city. And I still give you credit for that residence end deal. We're really seeing the, the impact of that revenue in town. And also the specific adjustments your department had to make for COVID with the planner reviews and such, a lot, lot of good challenges overcome. So good to hear on that. My, I have two questions. I think they're pretty quick. On the, on your org chart, so I understand principal planner Lisa Porras, her staff. The planning manager, I guess I didn't understand, what is the planning manager as opposed to the principal planner on your org chart?
So the way we had it just a year or so ago is Lisa Porras is the planning manager, and she was overseeing current planning. Andrea Marticich, who is now the principal planner, was a senior planner. And in light of knowing that we had two major large-scale initiatives, we had to reorganize our department. And so what we did is we knew that Lisa had a great deal of experience in long-range and advanced planning. And we needed a very skilled person to hit the ground running. So Lisa, as the planning manager, moved over to head up this new division called Planning. Andrea, she's been with the city for many, many years, she knew current planning. And she was promoted into the principal planner, which is a division head-level person that oversees the planners, the associate, the assistant, and all the consultants underneath. So that's how it worked. We moved an existing employee across, was already the planning manager, and then promoted one from within.
Yeah, I understood Andrea's promotion, so got it. So when your org chart says planning manager, that's Lisa and the advanced planning role is over there.
That's correct.
Got it. That makes sense. And then, so the, the contract planning, like Lisa Costa-Sanders, that reports into Andrea? Andrea oversees that activity?
Well, Lisa Costa-Sanders reports to me essentially, and she works on planning either large-scale key development projects or long-range planning initiatives. She, she can basically do just about anything with her level of expertise and experience. And so she works also in economic development and housing. So really, wherever we need her, we need an extra senior, somebody with expertise to work on some of the larger, more complex projects.
Okay, so you think of her as a direct report. And then, so I noticed the metric, how our percent of plans being reviewed internally is, was fifty percent in 2020. And you're seeing that going down perhaps to forty percent next year. So now, is that, is that a number of different organizations that are doing, that's, that's like outside contract planning? So that's not just Lisa Costa-Sanders, that's, that's, we have a host of resources there?
Yes, we do. In fact, we have, I believe, three plan check contracts. And, you know, the volume of permits has gone up over the years. And to keep on top of that and the complexity of construction, we have seen this model used in other cities, and we're using it very effectively in our community. And while we do do, as you noted, about forty, fifty house, the rest of it goes out. And that way, we keep those permits moving through the process very quickly.
Okay, and is that activity that, that is under Andrea?
That is, well, there's, there's, we have it both on the planning side and, no, I'm sorry, only on the building side. So primarily, when you're talking about plan check review, we have the building official doing, you know, the technical side on the, on the building inspection side. But we also do have a, some planning staff, on the planning staff side, as consultants to view overflow plans as well on the planning side, what they do. So both.
Okay. And if you're an applicant and your plan gets outsourced like that, is there any change in the fees? Are you now paying a consulting fee as well? Or is all that like within the same building fee that, that you would otherwise be required to pay?
It's all, my understanding is all within the same fee, and maybe Rebecca can do a better job of answering that question, but it's all the same fee.
Okay, okay. And then just as that's becoming, you know, ever more part of our public-facing aspect of, of plans, how, how do you ensure that quality control is, you know, meeting our standard? Like, you know, you know, I, I just would be concerned that as we're handing more of that off, you know, those kind of plan check firms have a completely different set of incentives than in-house staff that, you know, live and breathe San Carlos. Just curious, like what, 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 what do you do to kind of maintain the quality of that service?
Well, two things. One is we make sure that we hire the best and the brightest folks that have a really good reputation in the industry first. Second, you have to have people who, on your staff, who have done it and done it well. And, you know, have kind of grown in their career. So you need some oversight and quality control internal to the organization. You know, I think that if someone came from the outside and asked my supervisor or something, hey, or told them, hey, this is the right way we do it, that my manager would probably turn to me and say, do you agree? Right? And so you have to have that internal expertise to provide that quality control. And it's, it's extremely important as we, we live in a very technical world, and mistakes in our world can cost people a lot of money, a lot of time and consternation. So it's something that we take very seriously, and it's an insightful inquiry.
Okay. And that, that sounded mostly like how you're handling our staff. What, what closes the loop with?
John, can we, I just, can we, I just, out of respect, can we just kind of go around Sarah McDowell, Vice Mayor, has her hand up? And we'll come back if there's more questions. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will probably just build on what John, John's insightful questions. Thank you, Al, for your great presentation. It was very thorough, and I appreciate you walking us through all the really important jobs that your department does. And my question first, I, I have just three, three questions. And the plan check reviews, are those mostly that are kind of contracted out? Are those mostly for single-family home plans?
I'm going to go ahead and refer this question if Andrea, and, because we do it on both the building side and the, the planning side. So I would refer to them to try and answer these questions. Is Andrea and Chris available?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Can you take a crack at it on your side? Maybe Andrea can talk about it on the planning side.
Sure. Well, the plan reviews involve both single-family and large-scale commercial. So a lot of the second-story additions, new residences, multi-residential, mixed-use tenant improvements, and all the, you know, the Alexandria-type properties that you see getting built are being reviewed by third-party.
Okay, go ahead.
And on the planning side, we, we have the contract planners. We have set planners who do our single-family home reviews along with, with city employees. And for someone, you know, on the outside looking in, we're doing the same work and we work together on those. When we're talking the larger projects that are outsourced, outsourced, in that case, we are choosing consultants that are specific to the project itself based on their experience and expertise. So, you know, much more tailored in terms of the larger projects like Alexandria or other, you know, the industrial projects coming in. But for the single-family homes, it is split amongst city staff and contractors. And we do, just to, to refer back, if I may, for one second. We do, the, the contractors that work on the single-family homes and present to the RDRC do work very closely with us. We have weekly meetings with staff and contractors, so that we're all on the same page, we're all implementing the same policies. And we're, you know, making sure that we are providing the same consistent information across the board.
Okay, great. Thank you, Beau. My next question, I, I noticed one of the key performance measures for the building division is the number of days to respond to phone calls and emails. And it's very quick, one to two days. And I don't know if this question is for Andrea or Al, but does the planning department have that same kind of metric for responding to calls and emails?
Go ahead, Andrea.
Sure. We do. We, we try to do it within two days. Some inquiries are a lot more complex. However, if we know that we will not be able to provide an answer within that timeframe, we let, we reach out to the person and let them know when to expect a response from us. Or that we need to, for example, speak with a community development director or order some files from off-site, things like that. Our goal is to answer within 24 hours, but if it's going to be more than 48, we will definitely reach out and say, you know, here's our anticipated timeframe.
Okay, great. And are consultants doing the same thing, or are you, just the planning division is our in-house or responding to emails?
So for, again, for the consultants that work on, you know, the quote-unquote everyday tasks, mostly the single-family and inquiries, they are held to the same standard as city staff. When we get into the larger projects, the applicants are really only talking to the, the contractors per their particular project. So there's not the, you're not getting calls from people you don't know or inquiries that aren't related to your project. But the expectation is the same across the board for both employees and contractors.
Great. Thank you, Andrea. Appreciate that. And I just had one quick observation. I, I really like the goal of looking into adopting a strategic policy for acquiring market-rate units and converting them to below-market rate units. The preservation topic is very timely. We're talking about that a lot in the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust Board that I sit on. I know it's very complicated, the tax rule implications. But I did see that at one of our upcoming meetings, we'll probably be talking about legislation. And the fact that preserving affordable units will not count towards our RENA numbers is something that our city and our council might consider some advocacy work on. So just wanted to say that comment. Thank you again.
Thank you. All right. I don't see any other hands. Councilmember Dugan, did you have more questions you wanted to pursue?
No, Madam Mayor. I appreciate Vice Mayor McDowell picking up that thread. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Al. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right. I might propose, if people are interested, a ten-minute break? Or do you want to keep going? That's, I see some thumbs up. So let's reconvene at eight thirty-three. Thank you.
Sounds good to me.
All right. I think we're almost all here, just waiting for Vice Mayor. And then the next presentation will be from Parks and Rec Department, Amy Newby. There she is. Welcome, Amy.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Palmer Lohan and council members. Crystal, if you wouldn't mind assisting with the slide. So Parks and Recreation, this, oh, we're good. We can go to the org chart. This is our Parks and Recreation org chart. This chart reflects the two positions eliminated this fiscal year, which we will be proposing to return as of July 1st. And also reflects the new supervisor position for community events approved at the last city council meeting. Throughout a typical year, Parks and Recreation employs anywhere from 20 to 50 part-time staff, depending on the season. Part-time staff fall under all divisions and responsibilities vary. We also work with up to 75 contract instructors annually to offer special interest classes and camps. The ACC depends on volunteers to assist with some day-to-day functions, and there will be an increased need for volunteers for community events. Next slide. Moving on to each of our department divisions, starting with leadership and management. Our major services include meeting with our Parks, Recreation and Culture Commission to discuss matters related to the parks, recreation and cultural community needs, as well as meeting with our Parks and Recreation Foundation of San Carlos, Youth Center Foundation, and Friends of the Adult Community Center. All volunteer-based groups committed to raising funds that support recreation programs, park improvements, and provide scholarship opportunities to members of the community. I also work with our Public Works Department to oversee capital improvement projects for parks and recreation facilities, and manage the daily operations and staffing of the department, working closely with the two supervisors on all department matters. Next slide. To kick off our accomplishments for the year, we completed the Highlands Park Synthetic Turf Replacement Project on time. Since the field reopened in early March, we've heard lots of positive feedback about the new field from users. We recently completed the design of the Chilton Park improvements after working with neighbors on several design modifications, and construction should begin in the next few weeks. As with other departments, we transitioned, transitioned our commission meetings to an online format and worked with the Parks and Recreation Foundation and local developers to fund the Batting Cage project at Burton Park. Design is almost complete and construction will begin this summer. Next slide. In a typical year, we want to gauge how residents feel our overall programs are serving the community. This includes everything from youth and teen programs to our adult programs, events and other areas such as reservations and rentals of our fields, facilities and picnics, our sports leagues and family programs. Eighty-six percent is about one and a half percent higher than what was reported in 2018. And as you can see, this question was not included in the 2021 survey, as the pandemic drastically affected our ability to offer nearly all of our in-person programs. As we ramp back up our programming in the coming year, we will track this measure again. And I will go into more detail about our individual program areas to gauge how satisfied the community is with our specific program areas. Next slide. You'll see as I go through most of our department goals, although they do not directly reflect a strategic goal or objective of councils, most of our department operations are reflected in the city's mission, vision and core values. Leadership goals for fiscal year 2021-23 include completing the Chilton Park improvements by early fall, converting the outdoor court lighting to LED lights for outdoor basketball and tennis courts, designing and installing the new field lights at Flanagan and Stadium Field, which is the second phase of our field lighting conversion projects. Replacement of existing ballfield lighting was completed in 2019. And the last goal is to work with our whole department on the reopening of both the youth center and the adult community center, which we do see happening this year. Myself and other recreation staff meet monthly or bi-weekly with other San Mateo County Parks and Recreation Departments to discuss COVID protocols and best practices for resuming programs. And these conversations will continue as we plan to reopen our facilities. Next slide. Moving on to other program areas, starting with athletics. Major services for athletics include coordinating all of our sports classes, camps and leagues for youth, coordinating adult leagues, including soccer, bocce, softball, basketball, as well as drop-in volleyball and pickleball, handle all field and gym rentals, and facilitate and the coordination and scheduling of field space for all San Carlos-based youth sport organizations throughout the year. Next slide. Major services for youth development include the after-school drop-in program at the youth center, coordinating school break and summer camps for kids, managing youth center rentals and the birthday party rental program, provide leadership to the youth advisory council, and develop and train. and develop and train part-time staff in career development and skill building. We include this as one of our major services because for most of our part-time employees, this is their first job and they haven't had the opportunity to learn job skills. A few years ago, we expanded our training program for part-time staff, which not only supports the personal and professional development of city employees, but in turn provides high-quality customer service to our patrons while maintaining safe programs and facilities in the community. Next slide. Accomplishments for this year look a little different. Some are small victories, such as running our in-house summer camp, as well as working with youth sport organizations to provide in-person programs. We will be resuming adult softball and bocce in the coming weeks. And we hosted an esports league this past year. While we're not quite sold on if this will be a trend moving forward, we had some interest during the pandemic. Next slide. Our youth advisory council met virtually throughout the year and held a variety of community drives to support One Life Counseling families and local homeless shelters and programs. They displayed art in the community, held virtual events, and more recently, coordinated free mental health workshops for middle school and high school students in partnership with One Life Counseling, which included an overview on mental health and COVID, coping skills for teens during the pandemic, and de-stigmatizing mental health treatment. The first workshop has already occurred, but the next one is coming up and will be held on May 18. Next slide. I'll go through and explain what each of these performance measures capture. First, starting with sports class offered. This includes all of our department contract sports classes for tots, youth, teen and adults, such as tennis, basketball, karate and gymnastics, to name a few. Some of these classes are offered a few days or times per week throughout one year. The reported number captures all of those offerings combined. Although this is the offered number of classes, in any year, we typically see a handful of classes consolidate or cancel due to low enrollment. Organized play participants includes anyone who's participated in youth sports in the community, which includes Little League, softball, AYSO, San Carlos United, and our sports leagues for youth, including flag football and basketball leagues, as well as adult programs, including softball, soccer, bocce, basketball, drop-in volleyball and pickleball. Captures everyone. Number of registrations in sports classes reflects the participants in the above-mentioned classes. This year, we saw a significant increase in participation and demand for tennis classes as this was one of the first identified sports to be allowed to resume under the health order guidelines. I'm going to skip the duplicate line for play participants, sorry about that. For organized play hours permitted, this number includes the amount of time our fields are permitted for use among sports groups. And lastly, summer camp participants, as it's read, it simply calculates our summer camp numbers from year to year. Because summer camp is split between two fiscal years, the projected number for fiscal year 2021 reflects July and August from last summer and June of this coming summer. Our projections for future years will continue to increase from what's captured here. These numbers collectively help us gauge enrollment and participation from year to year and from program to program. It's also helpful to track our number of permitted hours on our fields to understand the demand of fields and the use. Next slide. The goals for athletics and youth development include resuming sports leagues and programs with expectations that there will be new guidelines to follow, increasing the number of nights we offer the bocce league from two nights to three, expanding youth sport classes and camps, and to start a new cornhole league. And for those of you that are not aware, last year in partnership with the Parks and Recreation Foundation, two sets of cornhole game boards were installed behind the Burton Park tennis courts. We're hoping to generate more use by starting this league, and if you haven't tried them out, I encourage you to. Next slide. Other goals are to work with the ASAP Group to continue to resume youth sport programs and leagues, increase the number of adventure camp participants, and resuming the youth center drop-in program and other in-person youth activities, which will include surveying the community to determine the need, rebranding and expanding the marketing of the after-school opportunities, and examining existing partnerships with the school district and to determine new potential opportunities, all of which are outlined in the strategic plan goal objectives under childcare and youth programming. We will continue to promote youth, mental health and wellness through a variety of programs, workshops and partnerships in the coming year. Next slide. All right, our adult services. Major services of the Adult Community Center include operating the meal program three days per week, organizing free and low-cost recreation and fitness classes for seniors. We've offered these classes virtually during the pandemic and will resume in person as soon as possibly this summer or early fall. Coordinate special events for seniors, including weekend dances and socials, and organize day trips and extended tours. Both of these, which have been shut down due to the pandemic, and again, will resume when possible. Next slide. Our personal and family development major services include the entire coordination and promotion of our contract classes for all ages. We partner, as I mentioned, with over 75 instructors throughout the year to offer a variety of classes, including art, music, dance, cooking, STEM and more. Club Ed is our summer enrichment camp program where instructors offer a week-long camp for youth. We also produce the seasonal activity guide three times per year. This year, along with other cities in the county, we kept the activity guide in an online-only format to allow for more flexibility in updating any of the programs as new guidelines were announced. As we head into the next school year, we will resume mailing the guide to all residents as we feel there will be more stability in our programs. Next slide. Accomplishments for the ACC and personal and family development units for this past year include the success of the ACC Meal Program. This program has skyrocketed since we restarted it last August. The ACC now serves nearly 500 meals per week. To put this in perspective, in March 2019, we averaged 32 meals per day. We were serving five days per week, but averaged 32 meals per day. And this past March of 2021, we served an average of 145 meals per day. This program is not only funded by the general fund, but by grant funding as well. The total amount of grant funds for this year totaled $43,500 and have come from the Sequoia Healthcare District and Dignity Health. The Curbside Meal Program was an opportunity for a quick check-in with a lot of our senior participants, especially during the heightened pandemic times in late fall and winter. Sometimes this was their only outing of the day and only contact with others was to pick up their lunch. And if you know our ACC staff, most days they put on a show for pickup, which definitely lifted the spirits of everyone. This is one of our pandemic program changes that we plan to continue when we resume our normal operations. We also continued to provide classes and lectures virtually and transitioned our customer service to serve participants remotely. Next slide. Staff took on a larger role this past year in the grocery distribution program through Carrying Cupboard and handed out about 6,500 bags of free groceries to low-income San Carlos residents. We redesigned the activity guide as mentioned to an online-only format to allow for program updates and changes. And lastly, partnered with the school district to offer the in-person Club Ed camps for summer 2021, which we did not have in-person Club Ed camps last summer. Next slide. Okay, so looking at the performance measures for ACC and personal and family development. The number of meals served for the ACC is the lunch program I just talked about, and you can see how successful it's been under the new format. Number of registrations in ACC programs includes the senior fitness classes, special events, trips and tours. As you can see, we're obviously significantly down from the previous year. The number for 2021 reflects our online fitness classes that we continue to offer. Number of recreation class registrations are all of our class participants. And number of new class offerings includes classes we have not offered in the past. This year, a few of our new classes include virtual Family Friday chemistry classes, virtual Lego and smartphone photography for beginners. The number of class sessions are the different days and times of the week one particular class is offered. So for example, Kids Love Soccer may have 10 different sessions for the entire fall season. The percent of registrations online help us track the in-person versus online customer service demands. As you can imagine, this year it was mostly online. And lastly, number of picnic rentals. In a typical year, pre-pandemic, we are well over 200 picnic reservations in a year. And so with picnics resuming this summer, we will start to see this number increase. And we're continually monitoring our class offerings. And we make sure to offer new classes throughout the year. At the end of each year, we audit class cancellations and class successes to continue to adapt to what the community, what the needs of the community are. We will also be analyzing the Monday through Friday youth class offerings as part of the strategic plan objective under childcare and youth programming this year. Next slide. Onto goals for the ACC and personal family development. First is to create a reopening plan for the Adult Community Center to resume in-person programs and events. We are looking to transition the Carrying Cupboard Grocery Distribution Program back to the board members and to identify a new location for the program once the ACC reopens. Next slide. Additional goals include increasing program registrations and participation for in-person classes and to increase the use of our fee assistance funds. As we start to take more registrations for our summer programs, we're seeing and receiving more requests for fee assistance. We want to continue to cross-promote our classes and the fee assistance program so everyone is aware it's available. Making our programs available to everyone, and especially those that may not be able to afford the recreational opportunities, reflects the city's mission. We strive to provide high-quality services to all of our residents and make them available to foster a safe and healthy community. Next slide. And lastly, our special community events unit. Major services include to organize and promote city special events. This includes summer concerts, movie nights, Goblin Walk, as well as some of our new events from this past year, including our virtual fun runs and other Halloween festivities. And as of July 1st, the Weekly Farmer's Market and Art and Wine Fair. Partner with outside agencies for event sponsorship revenue and facilitate and approve all nonprofit special event permits, including hometown days, fun runs, school picnics, youth sporting events and neighborhood block parties. Next slide. Although we had to cancel all of our traditional community events, we were still able to find a way to unite the community through virtual events. We planned Halloween decorating contest, pet costume contest, and held two virtual fun runs sponsored by the Parks and Recreation Foundation. Next. We permitted the reopening of the Weekly Farmer's Market last fall and partnered with the Lions Club to pass out extravaganza kits, launched a Letters to Santa program and responded to over 100 letters sent. And again, in partnership with the Parks and Recreation Foundation, we were able to put together and give out several holiday activity kits for families. While some of these events we plan to continue in future years, we are looking forward to resuming the events, resuming the events we had to cancel this past year. Next. These measures help track how many events we sponsor or co-sponsor each year. The number reflected for 2021 include all of our virtual events that took place. Revenues generated from sponsors help us understand how much offsetting revenue we're bringing in to help fund these community events. The special event permits issued include school fun runs, the car show, the former chamber events, and other nonprofit events that are held in town. And block parties are tracked as well. This is a number we anticipate to increase this summer as guidance allows for more outdoor gatherings. And last slide. So our goals for the upcoming year include continuing our new events for Halloween and the virtual fun runs, as well as to resume our traditional community events. And lastly, to increase our sponsorship revenue. Community events are a great sense of, create a greater sense of community by bringing people together. These goals will help accomplish this and follow the city's mission and vision by making San Carlos a great place to live, learn, work and play. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Amy. I see Councilmember Rack followed by Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Amy, I just want to say, I have no questions, just say thank you for all you and your team have been going through this. You really pivoted and got creative and were able to deliver services in a really challenging time and to all members of the community. And just thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to echo Adam's comments. Boy, when the pandemic started, Amy, everybody had to scramble, nobody more than you because Parks and Rec is such a hands-on department. But doing that and taking care of, you know, all the other little issues that came up, handling the Chilton Park development was, I just think exemplary. So anyway, congratulations to you. I do have one question, and that's regarding the lights at Flanagan Field. I see that they're sort of on the long-range planning for, that said, 21 through 23. Do you have a, you know, an estimated timeline as to when those will actually go in?
We do anticipate to begin the design this summer in July or August. And it will be Flanagan Field and Stadium Field. So design funding is funded in fiscal year 21-22. And then funding for construction is in the following year, 22-23. So we do plan right now to go along with that schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dugan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, Amy, I just wanted to echo my colleagues' really terrific job in a very challenging year. You guys just had to respond and adapt and just really meant a lot to a lot of people I know, and in particular, the Meals Program, a very important program. And I think that that really did a lot of good out there. My one question is, do you have any sense of, I know it kind of depends on guidance or whatever, but kind of if you had to guess when the ACC can open up for more regular services, would that be sometime over the summer? Or do you have any kind of rough estimate forming on that?
Yeah, going back to the announcement from the governor in early April with this June 15th date that we're resuming some, you know, normal functions. We're kind of waiting for more guidance under that announcement. But we are potentially planning to resume some in-person programs at the earliest mid-July. We definitely need the two positions that were eliminated. We would need those back to help support the functions of in-person programs and classes. So mid-July at the earliest, but we do want to see some programs back this summer. And it will be a phased scale approach. We're not going to bring everything back, but just start incrementally. The Adult Community Center sent out a survey to participants in the last month. And over 80% want to come back. You know, we were kind of hesitant. Are they going to want to come back? Are they going to feel comfortable? And overwhelmingly, amount of ACC participants want to come back. So we are, you know, starting our, we're in the works of our plan should we reopen as soon as mid-July.
Perfect, thank you for that. And then just very happy your organization's picking up where our former chamber has left off. And I think all those great events are going to be very important for San Carlos over the coming years. So glad that'll be under your leadership and hope we can keep the momentum going on all those.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
But, thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you. Two quick comments. Thank you, Amy. I will echo my colleagues' comments. Just hats off to you and your team. It doesn't surprise me that 80% of our ACC participants want to come back because the ACC is awesome. And I'm sure they've missed it a lot. You mentioned how much the Meals Program has grown and that you expect to continue those services when we go back to more normal times. Does that mean that you might, you're considering still offering the drive-through capability?
Yeah, so the changes, roughly the changes that were made, you know, drive-through pickup, it's a flat fee of $5 and it's one meal. We used to kind of give them choices and it just created a more complex program. And so we simplified it. Just created a more complex program. And so we simplified it and. And they've been happy with it. They've been really happy with the meals that have been planned each day. So. We'll continue to do that. And once we resume in person, they'll also be able to purchase their meal at the Adult Community Center. And then we would have some tables available for them to sit and eat.
Right. Okay. Perfect. I'm so happy. I'm so pleased to hear that. And I also just wanted to say, I really appreciate you putting a 15% number of expanding the fee assistance program for our youth. Our youth to, or whoever, I guess it's open to anyone, but. I would love, I've said this before, I would love nothing more to use up every dime of that fee assistance program and for you to come back to us and request more. So thank you for your work on that.
Sure. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Well done. All right. Our next presentation is from Police Captain Christina Bell.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Christina Bell, Captain with the Sheriff's Office and your police chief. So our mission in San Carlos is to create a partnership with the community, city council. And city staff to improve the quality of life to our community members and business owners. By the apprehension of criminals, crime prevention strategies. Recognition, intervention and resolution of issues within the community and our involvement with the youth of our community. So in San Carlos, we have four patrol teams. And within those patrol teams, we have five sergeants, one being an admin sergeant. 14 deputy sheriffs, two are canines, two are dedicated motors. We are fortunate to have three field training officers within the city and one field training sergeant. We have a management analyst, a records technician, three full-time CSOs and four part-time CSOs. And lastly, we have two dedicated detectives to San Carlos, but also we have access to our entire detective bureau. So for our school resource officers during the pandemic, we had to repurpose some of our school resource officers within our core functions and divisions. Albert, who was the former school resource officer, actually got a position within the Civil Bureau and has been there since. So congratulations to him. He did a great job. With the schools as well as the. Bridging the gap with the community policing unit. Our volunteers, which is our volunteer, we call them SPIPs. We have over 40 within the sheriff's office and because of the pandemic, they were all at home. I'm just now seeing them again. Very happy to have them. And we have them and use them as directed patrols. So we just have more eyes and ears on the streets for you guys in this community. Other sheriff's office resources, as you guys are well aware of, we've got a SWAT team. Bomb squad, our crime suppression unit, vehicle theft task force, narcotics. Task force and our perk team, which is actually housed here within San Carlos. And that's our psychiatric emergency response team where we have two detectives and two clinicians. We have a drone program, a new CAD system. Smart Force, which is our guiding principle for our intelligence-led policing. We're currently in a pilot with a company called Peregrine, which allows us to gather data from all of our systems. Map things and have a better visual representation of our crime trends. And we utilize the three crime analysts within the sheriff's office for that task. Next slide please. So in 2021, our some accomplishments. We supported the EOC, the city's EOC on a daily basis during COVID. As well as the county's EOC during the mass vaccinations and also other small intricacies. The city provided money to. For the jail to make the masks for our. Old folk homes here in town. Sorry. Don't know how to say. I digress. So we also secured $280,000 in grant funding from the state to support the traffic and alcohol related. So that's through OTS. And that allows us to deploy more motors as well as in the future in June, we're going to have a DUI checkpoint in the city of San Carlos. Also in 2021, we reduced the overall traffic collisions within the town, which is great. We. Kind of attribute that to the fact that everyone was home and not driving. So, but it's still, it's a win. We maintained a high violent crime rate, like a clearance rate. So that's very important. With the violent crimes that we find the suspects, hold them accountable and put them in jail. We held a less than five-minute response time for priority one calls at 81%, which I'll show you on the next slide. And lastly. We were, we had two enhanced crisis intervention trainings. This since January, so about half of our San Carlos deputies are trained on that. I'd like to also say that the reason why that we have the. High clearance rate is the deputies that are assigned here take the case from start to finish. And. Yes, we rely on the detective bureau, but we have very ambitious individuals here that want to. Make sure that they they have some accountability within themselves to help the victims within the city. Next slide please. So as you'll see, for calls for service for the fiscal year 1920, we're 13,575. Of those, only 143 were emergency calls or priority one calls. So we took over 2,000 crime reports and issued only 3,765 citations because not many people are driving. We also took the approach of COVID-19 of education and also just giving people a break during the very difficult times. We made 612 arrests. And we had 3,046 directed patrol activities, which means that that is self-initiated activity. Or a passing check, something that our deputies are being proactive and not just going to a call for service that they were called to. So the, going back to the percent of emergency calls responded under five minutes is 81%. So of those 143, only 28 were slightly over. So when we do our annual report, it is the average of all the emergency calls. Which the average is always under five minutes. And so the percent of customers who are satisfied with police services, that comes from the community satisfaction survey. So we're at 84% for 1920 and then the last one for the first quarter of 21 is almost 81%. Which I'm happy with, but I know we can do better. Next is the the percent of violent crimes cleared. We're at 72.7%, which is great. It's higher than the average in the region. And the percent of property crimes cleared is only 18.7%, but that is higher from the last time that this performance measure was presented. And I believe it was at. 13% roughly. Don't quote me on that, but I know it's more this time. Those are more challenging because suspects are most likely not known. So it takes way more effort to figure out who they are. And the number of abandoned vehicles that were marked were 489. And we abated 100%, which means that we either contacted the owner and had them move their vehicle. Or within 72 hours, someone didn't, we didn't locate the individual and they, their vehicle was towed. Next slide please. Continuing on. So the next four, you'll see a percent of citizens and then there's a satisfaction level of our sheriff's office. So what we do here, our management analysts will pull a list of individuals who have had contact with us based on them calling us for service. And then we deploy. The survey cards with snail mail and then we rely on them to return. So what we receive back, which is roughly 10 to 15% depending. On the time of year. So 98% felt that they were satisfied with the level of service received by the sheriff's office. And 98.7% that our deputies displayed professionalism. 98.7% that they displayed the knowledge and technical competence of the job. And 98.2% where the deputy showed that they care and are concerned during the interaction, which is very important to me and us here. And lastly, our parking citations are at 5,728, which is lower. Than the previous fiscal year because of COVID. And number of issues worn or issues, warnings issued, excuse me, are 352. And that equated to a 11% reduction in the accidents from the year prior. And we're projecting about the same this year. So the, our goals, 2021 to 2023. So we would like to see. Potentially a full-time downtown services unit staff member. And as it stands today. That it's filled on an overtime basis from the funding received from council, which was reduced during COVID. If we have a full-time, full-time personnel down there, then you have a mainstay deputy that will be able to. Communicate with the community, the business owners and have a well-rounded understanding of downtown and the surrounding areas. We also would like, we're working with Public Works to identify and implement a guided parking enforcement program to replace the former system. Which will work with our vigilance system with ALPRs that basically will be able to image a vehicle and then. If it's timed parking and another deputy drives by and then it'll send an alert and say, hey, that. That vehicle has been there for more than 20 minutes and we'll compare the pictures and then make sure it hasn't moved and then we can issue a citation. And also for the Wheeler Plaza, we're working on getting those types of cameras in there. And another goal is to maintain the heightened focus on traffic safety enforcement, which is. As mentioned before, as things are opening up, we will see traffic increase. And so it's extremely important for us to be. A visible and enforce the laws. And lastly. We'll increase the community awareness to help prevent theft. So. The biggest thing with theft prevention is education and also guided patrols and enforcement. Next slide. And that is it.
Great. Thank you, Chief Bell. Appreciate that. Councilmember Collins and then Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Chief Bell. That was a good presentation and I have to. I have to say you've, excuse me, you've just slid right into the job and it's almost been a seamless transition. And thank you for that. I wanted to ask though about the. The item you have about secure funding for a full-time downtown downtown services unit person. Is that otherwise known as having a beat cop downtown?
We could call it like a walking beat. However, they would have a vehicle. So, you know, they could be an extra body for the city if needed. As calls for service, you know, come up. But my vision, I'm sorry, is to make sure that, you know, we have a dedicated individual, like a liaison that can really. You know, what I'm hearing from the community and also from council is that you guys want, you know, the presence, like a lot of presence in downtown. And if we're continuing to get pulled for calls for service, you know, in the hills, on the east side, you know, then we're unable to stay as long as we would like. So that is the reason for that.
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of that. I remember the days when we had. Frank Harrington, who, you know, I know he was a volunteer, didn't carry a gun or anything, but. He was so well-known downtown and whether it's a volunteer or one of our staff members, I just think it's great that we would have somebody who would be well, very well-known downtown. It'd be a great presence and I think just their simple presence would. Have an untold effect on preventing, you know, whatever could go wrong down there. So I'm fully in support of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, thanks for the presentation. I just, I just want to follow up with. Ron's question on the downtown officer. Are you, when you say you're looking for a full-time downtown services unit, so are you talking about sort of a. Multiple shift, I don't know if you do 12-hour shifts or how you do a shift. Are you talking about sort of 24/7? Type of role? Are you talking, what are you, what are you sort of, what's your ideal situation for that?
Ideal situation would be two on a, two deputies on a 410. I'll take one on a 410. But that would be like Thursday to Sunday during our hot times when downtown is, is. You know, vibing, I guess you could say, people are out and about and we need that. And they can flex their hours and that can look differently for the community and whatever the council wants. But the reason with the difference with the full-time employee is that if, right, as it stands, I can't. Mando or mandatory anyone to cover that shift because it's not a full-time position. So it just becomes a union issue. So with with our ability to have a full-time employee, like it's a for sure person during these hours during this week. Or, you know, if we need to change their schedule for the following week because there's an event, then we can have that flexibility.
Okay. And if you say, if you had two. 410s. Or however, that that would allow you more flexibility to say, oh, we could. Do it Wednesday through Sunday, or is it more just you have, it just gives you more flexibility throughout that time period. To spread things out or people are on vacation or other things to kind of give you that opportunity.
So they would essentially work the same schedule. So they would have a cover person for them. So, you know, I would hate for them to be by themselves and then, you know, their current cover is like pretty far away. So that's, you know, if I could have anything I want. But again, like we wouldn't have to cover the vacation items, like we had that other person, they would be able to be off at the same time. And then we would just have that mainstay.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So a quick question about that. So my understanding is that some of the issues that we've had downtown have been. With particular establishments. Is it your expectation, Chief Bell, that this? Full-time patrol, you know, should we put them in place would be responsible for primarily overseeing those establishments? Or would you expect that they would cover the whole of the downtown? The reason I'm asking is if it's the former, there may be other models that we may want to consider. For example, you know, Redwood City had some challenges with. Some, you know, hotspots where they required the establishment to hire security guards as opposed to make that a public expense. So. Could you provide a little bit more color on your. Ideas around programming? Thank you.
Of course. So I, to me, it's about building relationships. And so if we have that full-time employee, that is a familiar face, that they will. Get to know the owners, get to know the patrons. Then, you know, the likelihood that we'll have the reduction in some crimes that we're seeing or just like some issues, then that will go down. But, you know, if. Whatever the council needs, if the council wants us to stay in a certain block radius, then that's fine. If they would like us to expand. You know, and if we can run it like, okay, this part of the year, we're going to do this because it's busier here. And it's all about just assessing our data.
Okay. So I don't know that that totally answers my question, but perhaps we can explore it more on Saturday. What I'm trying to get at is what. You know, what are, what are their specific tasks that they're going to undertake? So perhaps if you could. Maybe bring that to the fore next Saturday, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This might be a next Saturday request for information too, but I'm wondering the pros and cons of using a volunteer in policing. Versus an actual deputy.
I will definitely take that for Saturday, but just on the face of it, a volunteer is very limited to what they can and cannot do. You know, they're kind of like the security guard, right? You observe and report. So you'll get a faster response if it is a uniformed deputy. Hopefully that answers.
We can continue on Saturday, but thank you. That's a good answer for now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief Bell. Much appreciated.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next up is our Public Works Department, Stephen Maschida, Public Works Director.
Madam Mayor, I think fire is up next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. So Fire and Emergency Services Department, Acting Fire Chief Dave Pucci. Sorry about that.
No problem. Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor. And council members as well as city staff who has been sometimes I've been able to see you. It's great to be able to present to you tonight. I'm Dave Pucci, I'm the acting fire chief with Redwood City Fire. And we will be talking about some of the services overview of our fire department. Let's get to the next slide. So the main services that the contract with Redwood City Fire provides is listed here. Fire suppression refers to what you would expect. It's structured fire, wildland fire, trash fire extinguishment. Emergency medical services, which account for about 53% of our overall calls in San Carlos are mostly emergency medical response. Fire prevention refers to a list of activities and services that we provide to the city, which include fire and life safety inspections. As well as investigations of cause and origin of fires, whatever type they are. As well as wildland fire interface inspections and and plan check and plan review. Public assist calls could be pretty much anything that you would imagine that someone would call the fire department. Sometimes they can be a broken pipe to an animal rescue. Any type of service call like that. And rescue response would be that human rescue. Of any kind of trouble that somebody could imagine they can get into. We also provide the training for the community emergency response teams. We were able to provide a couple of classes last year and largely due to COVID and the impact of COVID. We've been unable to have people do in-person classes. And are definitely looking forward to ramping that up in the coming year when COVID. and are definitely looking forward to ramping that up in the coming year when COVID settles down. And then public education and community outreach is always a big part of what we do in San Carlos. We find a great deal of satisfaction meeting with school kids, being at the downtown events and being at the farmers markets on the weekends and do a ton of public education and outreach. And next slide. So some of our accomplishments from last year, just like every city department, the, you know, the impact of COVID-19 can't be understated. We were part of the Emergency Operations Center during the beginning of the pandemic. I remember the very first phone call I got from our city manager in response to that very clearly, and we have been responding to COVID-19 ever since. So while we did this throughout the entire COVID-19 impact, we've been able to maintain 100% of our services to the community. We're able to provide the proper PPE and training necessary for our personnel and managed to keep our personnel very healthy despite the fact that they came in contact with hundreds and hundreds of confirmed COVID patients over the course of the pandemic. Also with regard to our fire and life safety inspections, we are on pace to complete all of our mandated state inspections, which is always a goal of ours every year. Next slide. Another important note, this is something that I started when I was over in San Carlos, is we were able to get the FEMA grants for fuels mitigation. Fuels mitigation is one of the primary means that we have to get ahead of the wildfire problem in San Mateo County. It's, last summer's fire activity only underscored the importance of continued fuel mitigation. I'm glad that we got ahead of the curve and were able to secure that grant several years ago and we completed Phase Two. And working really closely with Parks and Rec and Public Works, Stephen and Amy are great partners to have as we have worked through that whole process. Another way that we pivoted this last year is as we got through the bulk of the COVID-19 ramp up and we're still dealing with emergency calls in the field, the fire service was uniquely positioned to be able to serve the community in a pretty untraditional way by helping with mass vaccinations. So we have taken part in the mass vaccination sites at San Francisco International Airport, at the San Mateo County Event Center, as well as smaller local vaccination clinics in hard-headed communities in North Fair Oaks, and we will be continuing to do that. At the same time, last summer, we were, as we always do, we provided mutual aid to statewide fire activity. And as you know, the statewide fire activity continues to get worse. The fires continue to burn more acreage, burn longer, and require more personnel than we have ever needed before. And unfortunately, last year, we had an event that was very local to us. The CZU Lightning Complex hit us quite hard and we were able to provide services to that. It was really interesting to see last year that some of these fires that we were having would, you know, be 100,000 acres, 200,000 acres, and they might have, you know, 4,000 firefighters on any given fire. And what we're seeing is about half the personnel available to respond to wildland fires over the course of the summer because of statewide staffing and the impact of COVID. So the staffing of the large-scale fires was greatly reduced last year. Next slide. So here are some of our performance measures. When it comes to total incidents, that's the first line. We actually saw a dip from the trend. Our trend over the last 12, 15 years has been very consistent. Our call volume is going up and this is true for us as a department as a whole, as well as San Carlos and Redwood City individually. So we're seeing the calls for service just rise along with population. We did have a little bit of a dip. So the 2020 actuals are going to be a little bit low because in the initial shelter in place, it just caused a reduction of every kind of call that we had. There were a few people being involved in car accidents because less traffic for people calling for services because they were sheltered in place. So we are projecting a significant rise in the number of calls for service in 2021. As you can see, our public education events drop off a cliff. So for 2020, we were able to get 31 of those before we cut it off for COVID-19 to work with the shelter in place order. And we have yet to resume fully our public education events. And that's, the same is true for the participants that just dropped off because of COVID as well. We look forward to the shelter in place, you know, lifting and we'll be able to reengage with our community, get back in the schools when they go back to school and enjoy that, that contact as we really enjoy that. Our plan reviews, we've been able to keep up with that as well as inspections despite COVID. We did pause our fire and life safety inspections for about three months in the very beginning of COVID-19 last March. Excuse me, March before last and then paused that for a quarter. And then we had the proper PPE in place and the policies in place to be able to resume inspections, which we did, so we really only lost about three months of time. And then percentage of fire investigations with a determined cause, it's typically right around five or so a year in the city of San Carlos. Those are the ones that we can determine what caused it, but worse, the number of investigations initiated, which would be a fire that requires the response of an investigator, remains around that 15 to 20 mark over the course of the year. Next slide. So our goals for next year is to continue to provide staffing for the EOC and really enjoy the ability as the fire department to help in any way that we can because we're focused on recovery at this point. So we have responded to the COVID-19 emergency response and now we want our community to recover from that. So however we can support that to get business to resume, whatever additional inspections are required or collaboration with other city departments to make sure that our local businesses are leaning forward in the recovery, we will absolutely support that. We're also looking to establish a Fire Explorer post program. We have a cadet program within the fire department and those are for people who are college age that are looking to get the fire service career. But we're looking for an avenue where we can have our local youth that are interested in that high school age range in the fire service, an avenue for them to become engaged with us. So I started as an explorer when I was 16 years old and that's what got me in public safety. And I want to open up that opportunity to youth in our town so they can actually go to the fire station, go on ride-alongs and learn about the fire service. We will continue to assist mass vaccinations in San Mateo County. We have a partnership with one of our local hospitals that I'm actually meeting with tomorrow because they're, right now, we're in a transition time where the county has been focused on mass vaccination. They shifted to some local community vaccination clinics and now they want to transition out of those to go back to the mass vaccination clinics. So we are in a position to provide some support and take the workload of the local vaccination clinics off the county and start providing those to our communities. And I'm not sure the locations or what kind of vaccine numbers we're going to get, but we're working hard to be part of that solution. We're going to continue to do fuels management. When we started that program and we started off with the initial FEMA grant, we had identified city parks and had a plan for all the city parks to do the work. And then we had established a budget to maintain the work once we completed it. And as we went through that process, we found that there were also parcels of other city-owned land that could be maintained even though they weren't city parks. So the project has continued to grow as we've identified more opportunities for fuels management. We've also been working well with other local agencies that own land and watershed and open space to encourage them to get effective fuels management plans in place that would directly affect our community. And next slide, please. Our goals continue to be working forward towards moving forward with Station 16 and thank you to the council for the support with that station. We look forward to breaking ground and we have our plans in place for how we're going to get moving on that project and excited to see the project, the progress that we've made so far. That is going on track very well. We will continue to support the strategic plan with the city in any way that we can. And also we have, looking forward to resuming a couple of activities that we've done before and have not been able to do with COVID. One is the evacuation drills, so that fits in with our public education model because wildfire preparedness is not just about what the city is doing to protect the community by doing fuels mitigation. It's also educating the public on what they can do on their own lands and through wildfire preparedness meetings and providing that education, but also conducting evacuation drills. And that helps us with identifying how, what that human behavior component is when they actually get that phone call that says it's time to evacuate. And we also have a new evacuation system in place that is called Zone Haven that we're still developing, it is in place now. But it had just really been put in place on a functional level when the CZU Lightning Complex fire hit, and it was used many times over the course of that fire. So we know that we are on the right track with the right development of a evacuation system and we'll continue to work on that. And next slide. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Any questions for Acting Fire Chief Pucci?
Actually, this is Tara, I don't have a question, but I had a couple of clarifications if you don't mind. Because poor Dave, he stepped in for Chuck, which we really do appreciate. But we did hold a wildfire virtual meeting last year, it was in September of 2020, and we are planning another one for August of this year. And the Zone Haven evacuation drill is scheduled for July. So just wanted to add those couple of things that Dave would not have known about.
Okay, thank you, Tara, appreciate that. I just have a quick question. Should the governor lift or reopen starting June 15th? How much further out would you expect the emergency office to be, remain in effect? You talked about moving to recovery, so could you talk a little bit about what that?
Are you talking about regarding the emergency declaration?
Yeah, right, well, the EOC, you'd mentioned that would stay open, emergency office.
Yeah, so with the declaration of an emergency, that's really up to the city manager and consultation with the city council and also with the city attorney. At some point, when we see a significant reduction in infection rates and the impact that we don't need to do that emergency response and we don't need those powers that is provided under an emergency declaration, that is when city staff could look at the time it would be to reduce what the city needs to do as far as the emergency declaration and declaring an end to the emergency. I would expect, just based on what I'm hearing about COVID-19, is that locally, we're doing very well. Our infection rates are down significantly. And I think the lingering concern that I'm hearing about is even though we're doing well here, that many parts of the world are still not doing so well and there's still concern for variants. And that is the curve ball that I'm concerned about is what variants will spin out of some other part of the world that may be resistant to the vaccine. But absent that, I'm optimistic that, you know, in the next couple of months, that can certainly be a conversation we get involved in.
All right, thank you. All right, all right, I don't see any additional questions, so thank you so much for your presentation.
Great, thank you.
All right, and now we go to Public Works Department, Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilmember Stephen Machida, Director of Public Works. You have the next slide, please. So Department Works actually has two divisions. One is on engineering side and the other is kind of maintenance side. So in the engineering side, it's composed of eight employees. And then the maintenance side is actually composed of 22 staff, full-time staff members. And then we additionally have maintenance contractors. Typically, they work in like our parks maintenance, media maintenance, streetlights, signaling, and street sweeping. Next slide, please. So Public Works major services for engineering. Basically, we establish and conduct capital improvement programming, engineer and essentially review private development permitting, which would include traffic and engineering, traffic operation analysis, and the safety and effective movement of people activities. And then we also manage and administer the transportation and circulation commissions who essentially reports back to council on certain measures related to transportation. We also manage the parking program and sidewalk program. One thing we didn't, or I didn't include on this slide is we also manage our stormwater program as well as reporting to the water port. So next slide, please. So some of the accomplishments that we achieved is repaired the tripping hazards, these are the sidewalk tripping hazards of our 200 properties. As you recall, probably two years ago, we had approximately 400 cases that were still open. And I had mentioned to you that we would actually repair the 400, 200 each year, so 200 years, a year ago, and then 200 this current year. So we're still on track, although we are a little bit delayed somewhat because of that kind of a pandemic that occurred. Another major accomplishment, we just completed the San Carlos Avenue pedestrian safety improvements. This is both Phases One and Two. And then as you had heard throughout all departments, COVID pandemic really is a common thread that we face, we all face a lot of challenges. From a public works standpoint, basically, we've all seen the little orange water walls out that we have placed out in Laurel Street to provide for the restaurants as well as local retails. We closed various streets, we had a lot of different signage. And so certainly those are the things that we actually have seen or probably most people have seen. But additionally, you know, we have, we're closer with Rebecca and Amy actually to kind of reestablish some of the cleaning protocols in all the parks. So basically, we had to look at all of the public restrooms, the playgrounds, as well as the basketball courts and tennis courts that we actually had to address initially during the COVID pandemic. And then gradually started opening up these facilities as, you know, the system kind of improved. But probably what you, many people probably haven't really seen is a lot of the work that we have done in all the facilities. Basically, this has started probably last July where we actually had sneeze guards. We actually installed the sneeze guards at all the public counters as well as sneeze guards to all the offices, as well as cubicles that we have in all our buildings. Additionally, we needed to install the thermal scanners to take temperatures as well as putting in the handstand trash stations at, you know, facilities. And then additionally, we changed out all the filters to HVAC systems to a little bit higher quality, again, to kind of protect our current staff. So these are some of the things, and then we're going to continue to kind of look at other opportunities. You know, we certainly anticipate we're going to have to do a little bit more, more work as far as in preparation for reopening. However, you know, a lot of the heavy lifting has already been done. Next slide, please. So some of the key performance measures, basically, you know, some of our reports were about 39 from last year, but we expect to go 51. Basically, non-CIP-related information notices created nine from last year and 10 we expect to do this coming year. However, we do know that, you know, that one of the priorities that council has that, you know, they want a lot more information kind of related to not only non-CIP, but probably CIP information related and get those notices out to the public. So we're, we'll talk a little bit more about that on Saturdays. But, you know, these are something that, you know, we heard very clearly from the council. And then we were talking about the informed San Carlos requests. You know, proximity average is about a little over 115, 120 per year. And the progress manages our total of 15 of years. Next slide, please. So sidewalk program, and as I mentioned, you know, sidewalk, we actually completed the, or will be completed, the 400 sidewalk backlog. As you can see, we really attempted to really focus on, and I'll just focus on the first line. You know, we did 10,000 square feet of repaired sidewalk here, this was in last year. We had a, we had a little dip as a result, as I mentioned, because of COVID. You know, we actually had to pause the program a little bit just until we could really understand what the process is and what the county was going to allow. I think most of you remember initially when the county declared the emergency, you know, they were not even allowing like landscapers or pool, pool people to actually go out into the, into the community to provide those services. So again, we had a little pause as a result of, you know, some of our projects. Next slide, please. Traffic engineering, again, you know, we, the, we also kind of experienced a little dip in some of the traffic engineering studies occurred. I think as it was pointed out, because there were many people working from home, the traffic actually had changed, traffic patterns had changed in conducting the traffic studies during when it's perhaps non-normal times. You know, it really wouldn't provide any fruitful information that we could use to provide or to make any changes to the signage or improvements that we might need to do. So as we start to open up, we anticipate probably more and more traffic circulation studies, more things, speed zone surveys to be done accordingly. Next, next slide, please. So parking program, you know, basically, we do have one parking program that's in the greater east side, San Carlos area. Basically, we kind of somewhat paused that program before issuing the permits, I think, in many instances, because you know, we were working together with the sheriff offices as far as not knowing that more people were going to be home. We wanted to ensure that that these, the people in the greater east side would not be receiving tickets. But in many instances, because we were working at home, it was a little bit more difficult, more challenging to actually issue permits. Although I think, you know, as time went on, I think we're able to find a program that we could issue the permits. And so we're starting to ramp up that program once again and start issuing the ticket, the parking permits, not only for the greater east side, but also for the employees in City Hall. So development and permit. So basically, I guess what I really wanted to point out is if you look at inspections conducted, this is in 2020. We had about 2,600 inspections conducted during this time. And a lot of that is attributed to you know, a lot of the work that was actually happening on the east side, mainly the new construction of industrial. We still anticipate a lot of that work inspection will continue on. And then as more and more projects kind of move forward as a result of not only private development, but we also expect, you know, CIP related inspections to also be increasing over a period of time as we open up. Slide. So capital improvement. So this is a project table, and I, please forgive me, we did have a significant error. As you can see, the first line, number of projects in 2020 is 65 and in 2020 is 22. It's a very large disparity. Actually, I think we really didn't realize that 65 is actually an aggregate of all the CIP projects. So this would include the projects that we not only completed, but the process that we haven't started and the process that perhaps been deferred. And so it's really not on the same basis if you look at the 2020 and 2021. If you were just to make the comparison between the two years in 2020 and, excuse me, the 2022 is basically of the projects completed. So in 2020, we actually completed 28 projects. And so the capital, the dollars invested in capital improvement would be closer to about $20 million. So again, but those two lines are were done in error and certainly will change that as part of the final, the budget process. Next slide. So administration or the goals within administration in the journey is we continue to build consensus on the infrastructure, the mains and priorities. And we'll probably talk a little bit more about that at the Saturday, Saturday meeting. But you know, one of the, one of the things that we really do want to focus a lot is on our street repaving system. But we also want to look at some of the pedestrian and bicycle accessibility and safety. As you said, as the council is fully aware, we, or they adopted or you adopted the bicycle master plan last year in July. We do want to complete the major infrastructure and transportation CIP projects, implement the neighborhood traffic management program or the NTMP. And then work with our partners in school to really look at the traffic issues as it relates to around the school as well as and performing kind of a walk audits that, you know, had been suspended as a result of kind of working from home and school not really being in session. Next slide, please. Continuing, we still want to inform and educate the public about all the traffic options that we may have. You know, one of the things as a result of the citizen academy that was an opportunity that we were able to educate the public as, as far as what we do and what we can do as far as traffic options or traffic calming. So that was an opportunity that unfortunately went away. And so we didn't have that ability to, as easily to conduct that training. We assist other departments with their strategic plans and goals. And then, as always, we need to identify all those critical traffic bottlenecks, as you can imagine, because work from home has been, has made traffic. So bottom of all looks haven't really appeared, but I think they are starting to show up. And I kind of mentioned a little bit more about the COVID-19 pandemic issues that we all have to deal with. So that really concludes from engineering and administration. So I'll go on to the facilities side. So their major services is managing maintenance of all city buildings, respond to service requests for any from city staff and then respond to the service request from the public. So some of the accomplishments that they made, completely, you know, they provide excellent customer service. They actually rekeyed while the lots, same way, just so that we're able to clearly be able to use your car key, if you will. Okay, insured, insured residents that to know how to report to maintenance issues where that's in call is informed. Or whether via email or phone calls. Assisted with all the facility CIP projects. So many, many include kind of supply stations or library kitchen improvements. Complete the vehicle road projects. I apologize, this is a little bit cryptic, but this is a project that we had. The two back, the front and back gates of the corporation yard actually were malfunctioning. And so we actually had to completely replace those two gates. And as a result, we would need to change kind of the remote protocol, if you will, or the clickers, if you will. And so, and so that included all our vehicles as well as, you know, some of the fire and police or sheriff offices. And then we, again, we completed the facilities related to COVID-19. Excellent. So some of the key performances are very similar to what you're going to see from year to year is basically they maintain the nine, nine facilities. Basically, because we haven't really enlarged any of our facilities that, you know, is still the 205. However, you know, once our station 16 comes along, you know, that will probably, that number will increase. And then requests were completed within first week. It's 85% and 48 hours, 100%. So goals for the maintenance facilities, again, to provide excellent customer service. They completed the issue of electronic ID badges to the contractors. They will continue to assist facility CIP projects and new things. Again, as I mentioned, the fire station, some of the fire station repair projects as well as to air conditioning and heating. And then they also helped out to complete the EOC or emergency operations upgrades. So fleet, talking about fleet management. So we're talking here about the vehicle maintenance. So they manage the vehicle equipment maintenance and purchasing operate the courtyard fuel station. And then dispose of any city vehicles or equipment. So as you can imagine, with all fleet, we all have to smog and smoke test all our vehicles, just similar to what you do with your own personal vehicle. They actually prepared the specification for the new bucket truck. So this bucket truck is actually going to be used to assist us perhaps on some of the street lighting or mainly to change out some of the signage, street signs that you can see on our overhead traffic signals. Complete the California emissions requirement for our fleet and then created a spill prevention control measure for City Hall generator. And again, this is something that is, has been required by the state just to ensure that, you know, we contain any of our fuel that could escape. So next slide, please. So accomplishment for fleet management, fleet management is they collaborate with this management or risk management for the insurance renewal. So basically, you know, these are some of the things that we need to take care of just to reduce some of our risk. And then they saved you know, approximately 82,000 on repurposing two trucks. So we actually had two vehicles that need to be repurposed. And we did that so we could allow, you know, a new truck or a truck for parks in our sign department. And basically, what really required is kind of eliminating or removing a bed of one truck so that, and we salvaged that truck while we're, while we're still able to use the bed on the repurposed trucks. So this is something that is very rare that people do, but you know, we were able to do that because we, we needed an additional truck. Next slide, please. So performance measures for the fleet maintenance is, you know, pretty much similar across the board. Although if you look at the value of what if line, the value of vehicle and equipment surplus. So in 2020, we had about $2,800. Surplus, however, in 2021, you know, again, we're not quite certain how many vehicles are going to be surplus as a result. I think as a result of, you know, we still need to take inventory and, and one of the things as a result of COVID, we have been assigning a, a maintenance worker to a, to a single truck. So basically, nobody's paired up, which we normally do, but we sign, sign a person to a single truck. Again, just for their protection. So next slide, please. So the goals for fleet maintenance is continue to smog and smoke testing the fleet, say compliant with the airboard requirements. And then purchase a new bucket truck as well as a class A dump truck and asphalt patch truck. Next slide. So going on to parks maintenance, the major services is managed to maintain the safety of park, city parks, playgrounds, median trails and athletic fields and courts. They manage the third-party contractors and these are the contractors I mentioned earlier in the org chart. And it's always conserve water, make efforts to conserve water in all our parks and mediums. Next slide. So some of the accomplishments is they adapted the new maintenance practice for parks, restrooms, playgrounds to disinfect restrooms daily and the playgrounds weekly. This is as a result of, you know, what we heard from CDC initially when pandemic first came out. We also installed the cornhole tossing that kind of Amy alluded to in her presentation. This is at Burton Park. And then we assisted the master gardeners on landscaping around City Hall courtyard, the planting areas and someone improving irrigation and probably most of you have seen some of the work that has been done in that courtyard. Next slide, please. So park maintenance accomplishments. So they completed the maintenance park, maintenance project at Cedar Hillcrest and other neighborhood parks. They beautified the sister city lane with some new pots and plants and those you can probably see next to the Wheeler Plaza alleyway. And then completed 30% of the Vista Park second phase plating with aromatics. And then 90% of the third phase of North Vista Park, improving the drainage and irrigation. So park maintenance, more park maintenance accomplishment, they cleared about an acre of scotch burn in the upper Arguel for fire prevention. I guess this is something in conjunction that we work with fire department just to kind of make sure that, you know, we're addressing a lot of the fire, water fire threat. And then continued our prevention effort in all open space areas. Next slide, please. So performance measures, very similar to what we see from year to year, basically about 62 and a half acres developed park. You know, the work order is completed in the house, you know, we actually predict we're going to do approximately 800 and we're finding what parks maintenance is. Even though there has been pandemic, one of the things that we have noticed that there still is a demand for, you know, for making addressing various things, whether it was, you know, things that we saw. You know, basic, just general pickup cleaning or, you know, in other instances, it might be as it relates to you know, taking care of a certain park issue. So, so we do it, project work orders in the parks will continue to climb as we reopen. Next slide, please. So park maintenance goals is, you know, as always, we continue water conservations in all our parks and medians. Implement the Chilton Park master plan, respond, continue to respond to customer service and then continue to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. Next slide. So wastewater overview. So major service is we manage the maintenance of the sanitary sewer system, including the mains, laterals and the stations. We manage a capital proof projects for collection system replacement. So these are kind of the critical things that we have talked at length with council, but this is to kind of replace a lot of our old aging sewer mains. We respond to residents' requests and emergencies and then respond to so-called valley clean water for various funding needs. And this is really as it relates to you know, some of the inspections that they need to do as a result of grease that we might see the, the business be generating. Next slide, please. So accomplishing any wastewater is maintain effective sewer maintenance and customer service. Despite, we actually had some shortages during, because of the COVID schedule rotation. We actually will be increasing the number of inline CCTV investigation and we successfully execute in-house emergency point repairs. So some of the performance measures, as you mentioned, if you look at the second line, then on your feet of sewer lines clean in 2020, it's, you know, just a little over 230,000 liter feet. In 2021, you know, we really want to do a little bit more than that. So we're projecting to like 350,000 feet. And again, this kind of correlates to probably some of the emergency responses, you know, actually the more lines that you do clean, there's less likely that you're going to experience the SSOs or sanitary sewer overflow. Just because the roots or any kind of blockage, you know, they tend to cause the sewer main to surcharge, they're called, cause problems either in the main or in sewer lines. So next slide. So the wastewater goals is again, to continue to reduce the number of sanitary sewer flows. And that's always the biggest challenge, but that's always something that we always, you know, try to complete. Continue to provide the service, excellent service, increase the number of linear feet of main sewer lines clean. And then research and implement any sewer, new sewer technologies. And, you know, some of the things that we're looking at, it's they call smart manhole covers. And this allows us to monitor the depth of the sewer main of the flow in the sewer main. This kind of perhaps gives us a little bit better indication of when sewer lines actually surcharge or perhaps when it is about to overflow out of the main. So next slide, please. So let's talk about stormwater. So major services monitoring, maintaining storm drain systems. We also need to look at our letting maintenance and repair the storm drain pipe, storm drain pipe and covert cleaning. And then implement the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System or NPDES permit. And then we also need to monitor the creek, you know, basically for flow debris as well as, you know, if there's any blockage or that could occur that caused other discharge problems. Next slide, please. So the competent stormwater, completed the storm season preparation. I think probably we, you know, I spoke to probably all of its council members is, you know, basically our storm season is when we pretty much do all hands on deck. Basically, this requires all our, our maintenance people to actually assist to clean, you know, the pipes and creeds and storms again, so, so that we don't have any flooding, level flooding in the streets or in someone's houses. We also clean about 200 or 250 trash capture devices at least three times a year. We have built a wood retaining wall 3017 Britton Avenue. And this is not actually at that address, but it's actually behind Britain, this, this address. And it is a kind of a natural pond, but it has caused us problems in the past. So we're actually trying to figure out a solution, but as a means, a temporary means, as we built a wood retaining wall that will actually help drain that pond so that there's, you know, the residents won't experience backyard flooding. And then main. So we really haven't any major flooding because we have maintained the storm systems quite well. So next. So some of the key performance measures, you know, basically from last year, we do anticipate actually doing more inspections and doing more cleaning from, from last year to this year. So again, I think as we're starting to open up and we're starting to be able to get out a little bit more, I think we're going to see a lot more activity in our storm, stormwater and storm drain cleaning effort. get out a little bit more, I think we're going to see a lot more activity in our storm, stormwater and storm drain cleaning effort. So goals for stormwater is we'll continue to work with engineering to repair any damage storm drain lines that we might see. You know, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, we did a retaining wall at three oh one seven Britain Avenue. Could continue to clean the trash capture devices and then prepare for our next storm season. So now we'll go on to street maintenance. So the major services manages the bridge and retain wall inspections. Continue to provide pavement maintenance and any repair, maintain the street lighting system as well as the traffic signals. And then may maintain traffic signals and markings and respond to any requests that might come about from the community. So accomplishment, street maintenance is completely the twenty twenty pavement rehabilitation project. Continue to support engineering divisions on pavement rehabilitation and then continue to have sidewalk repair program and remove kind of the deviations or these that three quarters deviations on over the two hundred properties from the current backlog. And, you know, that we should complete, this is the second year, and so we should complete that by May of this year. Next slide please. So performance measure very similar, street lights repaired, last year we had eleven. We projected to do, you know, twenty in twenty twenty one, probably twenty. And I think a lot of it is as a result of, you know, making sure we get out there, just to make sure that street lights are kind of taken taken care of. We also anticipate probably having to do a lot more curb curb painting, you know, last, last year was just under five hundred liter feet. Now we expect to do a lot more and then some of this is going to be as a result of, you know, some of the curb painting needs to be refreshed. Some areas we want to put perhaps window parking. So this is kind of a linear foot that we anticipate to save a little bit of foot additional. We also going to focus a little bit more on dealing with some of the pothole repairs. So we practically double the number of pothole, square feet of pothole repairs that we're going to need to do. Next slide please. So from last year, the number miles paved is one point eight miles and we're projecting two point five. We'll discuss this a little bit more on Saturday's session, but basically the focus that, you know, I want our engineering staff really is to look at street rehab. And so we will be kind of making that request of council to actually fund, you know, more streets so that we can actually go from our pavement condition index or P C I, which you may have heard from about the kind of lower sixties. So we start gradually trending more towards seventy and seventy is kind of the goal we would like to achieve. So next slide please. So the goals for street maintenance is to continue the annual street paving, traffic striping and sidewalk repair projects. Replace all the street name parking enforcement signs, meet new reflectivity standards. So these are a little higher reflectivity standards that you might see. Identify opportunities to provide green infrastructure on a lot of our streets. This is a requirement of the water board and I know they are anxiously looking towards cities to actually kind of move towards green infrastructure. Update our implement of our five year paving master plan and then continue the sidewalk repair program and eliminate the cycle deviations. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Any questions for council member Dugan, a couple of questions and then if there's other council members?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Steve. You guys obviously cover a lot of ground and a challenging year on your front, I'm sure. Just a quick question, so the, you know, I thought the San Carlos Avenue sidewalk program was just, you know, a big win for San Carlos. Big improvement, especially improved safety to Arundel Elementary School. So just nice to see that that completed. Do we, I didn't notice it in your list of goals, but do we have any more kind of significant sidewalk improvement projects on the horizon? And and if not, how do you think about that? You know, how can we think about that as a council? I mean, I, you know, I didn't go through that particular project, but it just seems to me that we have a lot of substandard sidewalks and children moving around, safety sort of things. And, you know, a town like ours, it just seems like we should, you know, just kind of keep a continuous sidewalk improvement program going. Not not just the repairs, but actually adding sidewalks, you know, thinking through school, travel, safety and really just being proactive on that.
So, you know, thank you for bringing that question up. You know, as I mentioned, the San Carlos project actually complete, we completed the first and second phase. The third phase is actually currently under design and will actually go from, I believe, Wellington all the way to Kenton. And as that, that or excuse me, Beverly, across the street from Beverly. And essentially what that will do is that will kind of make that connection so that you have complete sidewalk on the Sterling side or eastern side of San Carlos Avenue. So that would actually provide a sidewalk essentially from Prospect all the way to something Beverly. So, you know, that that's the next big project and as I mentioned, that that's currently under design. Now, there's there's some other opportunities that we want to see and that's something that, you know, we wanted to kind of look at, you know, get some feedback. I know the council members have shared with with me on, you know, other other areas that we probably want to add some sidewalks. You know, I would like to develop a plan, I think, in conjunction with perhaps the bicycle head master plan as well. You know, that way we could kind of utilize the plans that the master plan had outlined and then we could start identifying those areas and those limits of work that we could, you know, having the ongoing pace of doing sidewalk improvements.
Yeah, terrific, and I don't know if we'd want to talk about it more on Saturday, but I personally would very much support kind of an ongoing adding of some amount of new sidewalks every year in San Carlos. So I'm glad to hear about the phase three and would love to keep learning more about sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Stephen, very thorough presentation. I'm just going to keep it short because of the hour. A while back, and it's probably been a couple of years, I had heard from some residents about a section of Britain that is on the south side, west of Alameda, you know, where the street dips there.
Yes.
Past the church, it was all, I don't know how long that section is, several hundred feet that has never been paved. And I don't know if if we if we own that right away, if that's part of Neesmond or whatever. I I'm just wondering if you have heard from anyone about that particular section being requested to be turned into a sidewalk, because right now it's just kind of dirt and weeds.
So I think probably when I first actually joined the city, I kind of initially heard heard that. But, you know, we haven't really pursued that, but that's certainly an area that, you know, when I drive by there, I, you know, I see that there is that opportunity. You know, so that that is something that perhaps we can look a little bit more closely at and see whether, you know, there is something could that could be done. Whether it's, you know, to add sidewalks, sidewalk there, or perhaps maybe change, you know, some of the geometrics of that that lane. You know, so such that you could provide some type of sidewalk perhaps in the street while still making it safe.
Yeah, maybe we could just put it on the list.
Thanks. All right, thank you, Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Stephen, thanks for the presentation and for all the good work you you and your department do. I just want to follow up on Ron's comment around the Britain Avenue, because I think it's something I've raised potentially before is that you just, west of Alameda, it's a challenge to walk up and down Britain because it's not connected, right? So I think looking at how either on one side or the other, we can allow access down to try to get more people walking would be worth worth taking a look at. I know it's a challenge, I think, probably from an engineering standpoint, but I would concur with Ron, that'd be worth worth exploring. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, I'm not seeing any further questions. Thank you, Stephen, much appreciated. All right, at this time, if there's any members of the public who wish to make a comment. Crystal, do you want to share the instructions?
Yes, if you can just raise your hand if you have a public comment and it looks like Sonia Elks has one. So you should be able to unmute yourself, Sonia.
Thank you for taking my comment. This has been a really great presentation. I appreciate all the staff. I think we have a great team in our city and council and thank you, everybody. I just had a few comments and I have to find my notes. I'm going to go backwards from what just came up. Thank you, Stephen, for your presentation. I wanted to echo the Britain Avenue piece. It's not just inconvenient, it's an actual serious hazard. Because it's this blindness and this walking with, trying to walk with children there means you have to actually cut across, walk up this hill between the two streets to, because the sidewalk starts on one side and then it skips to the other side and then you have to go back to the other side. It's 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 a serious hazard and I appreciate Ron Collins bringing that up and Adam seconding that. I really appreciate John Dugan's comment about prioritizing sidewalks, walking. I also want to really reiterate that we need to, any sidewalk, I mean, any pedestrian project needs to also be a bike friendly project. When we put in curb bulbous, if they're going to go in, they need to have a bike accommodation. We can't do pedestrian or bike, it needs to be a combination, it needs to also be public transit friendly, right? So if Britain Avenue is, if we need a bus only lane on that Britain Avenue, we need to be very careful about where we put concrete. Public transportation is a huge part of sustainability and that's a really big part of our climate needs. Bicycling infrastructure is not just an afterthought feel good thing. It's it's a crucial component for reducing our traffic and parking congestion and also making a difference to climate change. It is one of the most helpful things that an individual can do to to, you know, contribute to the overall planetary health, which is a really big part of the meaning of someone's life. There's a lot of components, so thank you for taking for that. And then very briefly to police department, thank you, Chief Bell. I just wanted to say that the downtown officers.
Sonia, your two minutes are up. If you could wrap it up, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, yes, can that vehicle that they're on be a bicycle? I think a big part of our downtown issues come from new riding wheels, a bicycle, a bicycle officer would be really helpful downtown. I'll bring up other comments later, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so that moves us to our, are there any other public members, the public who wish to speak, Crystal?
No, I don't see other hands.
Okay, all right, so now we'll move to council comment and discussion, Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will keep it brief, but I just wanted to say, it was just so nice to hear from every department tonight. And I am just so grateful and I know the community is so grateful for all of our staff's work in pivoting this year in a major way to help our community through the pandemic. And I really think that one of the silver linings, and I heard this over and over again, is that it helped many of our departments find ways to streamline and to automate some operations and to use more technology. And I'm just, I'm just so impressed and so grateful for everyone stepping up in a million different ways. And it was very apparent tonight through all of the presentations, so I just wanted to to share my appreciations.
Thank you. I'm not sure who went, who raised their hand next with it, Councilmember Rack or Dugan?
I think it might have been me, Madam Mayor, and yeah, thank you. Just wanted, yeah, I'll just echo Vice Mayor McDowell's comments, just department after department. Just a very strong list of accomplishments on a very challenging year and everyone had to adapt and respond and do it under a decreased and pressured budget. So just, I'm very grateful for all that effort and work and I know the community noticed it as well. And, you know, very much appreciate that. And we can all look forward to hopefully a better next fiscal year. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Dugan, Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to again, thank everyone for the presentations today and I, great work over the last fiscal year. It's been definitely been a challenge and look forward to Saturday's meeting. And I know we didn't have, just quickly, any kind of agenda setting on here. I just, at some point, would love, I saw an article in the, I think in the Daily Post today about some of that housing bills moving in Sacramento and I would really be keen to hear from our lobbyists and get an update on where that is and when it's, assuming it's getting closer to time to kind of weigh in. So I know there's no agenda setting, but wanted to just put that thought out.
Right, thank you, Councilmember Rack. It looks like, go ahead, Jeff.
I was just going to respond to that and Tara, maybe you could help me out because I don't remember the exact date, but I believe we have this scheduled for one of your main meetings.
Yeah, the next meeting, May tenth.
Great, thank you. You guys are, you guys are amazing, you're just on it.
Agenda set.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to thank all of the presenters tonight and all of the staff members who who joined the call, who were at the ready to answer questions. Again, a truly unprecedented year in terms of a global pandemic, untenable wildfires that literally surrounded the Bay Area. Social and racial injustice issues that we were working through as a community and still are. You know, Councilmember Dugan mentioned the fact that the, you know, the budgets were, you know, tightened. And I'm still really amazed at all of that was accomplished, that, you know, this, this was just the highlights. It took us a little over four hours to get through all of those and I know that there is much more work that was done that you just, you didn't speak to tonight. But keeping the community engaged, working together in collaboration with the community, outstanding communication was had and going into this, it was so unclear where we were going to end up. And the fact that the survey responses came back and the community is still, you know, very satisfied with the work that's being accomplished is truly remarkable. I just can't thank you enough and incredibly impressed and I wouldn't, I just can't imagine what this year would have been like if you all hadn't been on the team and I just really appreciate all of you. So thank you so much. All right, well, I think that brings our meeting to a close, so we'll officially adjourn and we will resume our discussions on Saturday at nine AM, correct, Jeff?
That's correct, we'll see you then.
Thank you.
I'll be calling in from Nashville, Tennessee.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Night. All right, take care, bye.